Thank you. I'm calling the planning board for December 13th, 2021. We will call 22 with Lisa. Actually, we have Baptiste, we also have Mr. Shaheen and Mr. Buckland from the planning office.
I'm pretty quiet on.
And Mr. Rowley from engineering. As I do, I will read our mission. Wareham Planning Board is a land use board whose primary purpose is to provide for and guide the orderly growth and development of the town of Wareham. The planning board will oversee and administer the land use projects that fall under the jurisdiction of this board with three primary objectives. Those are to ensure the public safety, interest, and welfare of the citizens, to proper application of state and local laws, regulations, and procedures regarding land use, and safeguard the land use rights of Wareham property owners. The state and local laws, regulations, and procedures which have been established by the voters of Wareham and their elected representatives include the Wareham bylaws, the Wareham zoning bylaws, the Wareham rules and regulations regarding subdivision of land, and the Massachusetts general laws regarding the zoning act and the subdivision control laws. Other functions of the planning board include the consideration and preparation of amendments to the town zoning bylaws for submission to a town meeting, and in development and maintenance of the Wareham master plan. We are anxious to work with the citizens of Wareham as our town evolves, and we encourage all citizens to familiarize themselves with our state, local laws, regulations, and procedures to help us provide for and guide the orderly growth and development of the town of Wareham. Thank you for listening to that. Preliminary business tonight, we have minutes from July 12th, July 26th, August 9th, August 23rd, and November 22nd in front of us. I have talked with Mr. Schultz about this, and while we're very appreciative of the fact that we have these minutes, he has some comments that he'd like to share, and if the board is okay with that, I'd like to ask him to meet with Mr. Shaheen between now and the next meeting and go over those concerns and hopefully bring them back for us to review and approve at the next meeting. Has anyone have issue with that?
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, Aaron, I'll.
I have no problem with it.
I'll schedule some time to come by.
Mr. Corbett, okay. All right. So that's, I don't think we need a motion to do that, but that's what we'll do. And then before we go any further, I want to talk about meetings for the rest of December. We have a workshop scheduled for the 20th, which is a week from tonight, and we have a planning board meeting scheduled for the 27th. Talking about the planning board on the 27th, I would suggest that we cancel that meeting and move into January unless anyone has any. Let the record show Mr. Baptiste is here at 6:04. Glad you're here, Michael. We were just discussing whether we should have a meeting on the 27th. Does anyone have any thoughts?
I won't be present, so.
I'm sorry?
I won't be present on the 27th. I'm still be out of town.
Anyone else going to be gone? I'm going to be gone.
So we won't have a quorum anyway.
So I'm gonna, I would accept a motion that we cancel the meeting of the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. King and a second by Mr. Schultz to cancel the December 27th meeting. Can I vote, Mr. Corbett? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Baptiste?
Yes.
Mr. Swenson votes yes. So that's 5-0-0, the meeting of the 27th is canceled. I want to make sure that we are on board for our workshop a week from tonight. It will be a Zoom meeting only, and on the agenda is Article 15 site plan review, site inspection procedures, and if possible, there's three other procedures out there about public carings, special permit escalation procedures, and fees in, in a fees document that we can talk about. We have plenty to talk about. I'll keep it to an hour, but number one on the agenda is Article 15 site plan review, and number two is site inspection. Everyone good for that?
I won't be here.
Michael?
Sure.
Sam?
I have just a question. Have you sent a revised copy of section 15 out?
I will have, hopefully I will have it on. You'll get a copy from me, and you'll also be able to get it from the planning board website in the next few days.
When is the last day you're taking comments?
I'll take comments right up till, right before the meeting.
Because you'll do another revision.
I'm gonna do several, I think.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so we'll have a workshop meeting on the 20th. I will make sure I work with the planning office to get the Zoom set up and the agenda posted. Okay, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 public carings tonight. The Fearing Hill Road. Mr. Shanahan contacted us. He wanted to talk to Noyes tonight, and his data is not complete. He has suggested a continuance. So any comments from anybody? He wants to bring a response back to Mr. Lintell's issues around historic sites that he presented at the last meeting, so with the, with his noise analysis to this board at our next meeting, which will be the second Monday of January. Discussion. I'd accept a motion to continue the Fearing Hill Road project 21, 21, 21. Ground mounted solar to, I gotta look at the date, but what's the second Monday in January? Someone told me 15th. 10th.
Monday.
10th, okay. To move to January 10th. Going to have that motion.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Corbett, we used, did you second that? All right, so any discussion? Mr. King, vote.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste? Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. With Fearing Hill Road is continued to January 10th. I'm gonna skip down to. I'm gonna skip down to the next one, number 2, 31, 21, North Carver Road. Aaron, you've got a request for a continuance there?
Yeah, they requested to continue to the next meeting as well. The email, I dropped you guys a copy of the email. Send your folder, and all of you guys should have it too.
They, did they state why? Thank you. Making revisions to the site designed based on our discussion with the Conservation Commission, and we'll be before them on December 15th to review those changes. Thank you. So I would accept a motion to continue North Carver Road solar to January 10th.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Schultz and a second from Mr. King. Any discussion? Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. So it is continued to 110. I'm gonna skip down to number four. This is 33, 21, the Zero Route 25 or the Fletcher program that is waiting for a ruling from the Attorney General regarding our solar bylaw amendment that was passed at the June 12th town meeting. Any discussion there? I'd accept a motion to continue that to January 10th.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. King and a second by Mr. Corbett. Mr. Corbett?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. So that passes 5-0-0, that is zero, zero.
That was 33, 21, right?
Yeah. Yes.
33, 21.
Yeah. Okay, so we have left on the agenda tonight Robinwood Road subdivision. We have Baypoint Club subdivision modification. We have two new public carings tonight, one on Tobio Way, which is down off Great Neck. No, I don't know where that one is.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's three. There's another one on the back of your.
Yeah, boy, thank you. We have one on Great Neck, and we have one, Mr. Warren on Main Street. So we will, we have five to go through tonight. I will reserve the right to cut off public comment. We have a lot to do. Hopefully, we don't have to, so let's, let's start with Robinwood Road, please.
No, I just want my.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering.
Tom Gay from Gay and Gay.
So just so everyone knows, you know, we were only able to submit this revised package on Thursday, but we felt that it was important to show up tonight just to present the revisions and answer any, any questions that the board may have.
Okay.
And then certainly, we would be asking for a continuance to January 10th to give the board and, and Mr. Rowley a chance to review the materials. So what, what we have submitted are revised plans, a response letter to Mr. Rowley's review, revised waiver request letter, a specific letter from Mr. Gay regarding the waiver request for the lot shape, lot shape factor, and, and a new stormwater report. So two of the biggest items from Mr. Rowley's review was a request to analyze the stormwater impacts, pre, pre-development and post-development, and so, so we have done that. We've defined design points for the subdivision as they are today and, and as they will be in the future, and we've, so we've provided that analysis. I won't go into that in detail because it, it's, it's technical, of course, in nature, but, and then as far as the roadway design, so we had previously had a cross-pitch road to a swale on one side and a rain garden, and so, you know, we've adopted his recommendation to put a swale on both sides of the road to crown it. It's 18 feet of pavement, three foot shoulders. There's a swale with a crushed stone trench on either side of the roadway, and, and so majority of that runoff basically stays right in that system. We've got one and a half foot deep swales, excuse me, and the 100-year storm calculates a nine-inch depth within those swales.
What was the depth again? I'm sorry.
So the swales are a foot and a half deep.
A half and then nine inches.
Nine inches is the calculated 100-year storm flow.
Thank you.
Just from a rainfall event. And another aspect of the design, in order to accommodate the request of onset water is, is we're looping the water main so, so it will connect above Forest Street where it's the end of the loop, if you will, and we'll come in and through the subdivision roadway, and then we'll go out that lot line. And so that was very important for, for onset.
I'm sorry, I don't, forgive me, I don't understand what looping the, the water main means. Can you just educate?
Sure, well, so traditionally, if you were in the neighborhood of 500 or 1,000 feet for your road, and as per our previous design, we would, we had a dead-end line. We, we had a hydrant at the end for flushing, but it was just a, a single line, which is referred to as a, as a dead end.
Came in and stopped. Yep.
So now we, now we have a loop. We have two connections to the main in Robinwood.
So the two benefits of that are less stagnant water, and then if they ever need to shut off a portion, they kind of have two shut-off points, so it's a constant flow of water instead of the waters hitting the hydrant at the end. You'll see hydrant flushing a couple times a year they go out, so it's to eliminate that, so better water quality.
And these were observations that, that you made these in relationship to observations made by onset fire?
Well, yes, the onset water district, it's something that they've been requiring for every project since the new superintendent came on board.
Mr. Point of work, did we get a copy of that request from onset water?
I don't know of it.
Aaron?
Yes, I believe you have, it's a letter from their consultant, OSD Consulting, and so that, that was provided a while ago, and it is posted on the webpage.
Thank you, I'll go back.
Thank, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's fine. I mean, those are the main changes on the plans, and, you know, it's, it's documented in terms of the drainage report, what we feel the, how the compliance is, is met. Just want to note, in terms of the waiver request letter, excuse me, we've, we've added street trees just outside the layout so that they don't interfere with the swales, and so we've eliminated that as a waiver request. I, I went through. Section, I went through, one of Charlie's comments was full compliance with, I guess, section six, and so I added requests for waivers of cat, for catch basins because we, we want the country drainage. I hadn't previously requested a waiver from catch basin, so I added that. And there's an old reference, I believe it's old, to a fire alarm circuit and fire boxes, and so, you know, I think that's outdated, but I added a request to not have to provide a fire alarm circuit and fire alarm boxes. Those are the only changes. We still want relief from sidewalks, Cape Cod berm, and another waiver I added was the shoulders are specified to be three inches higher than the pavement in Wareham, and so we want the, the shoulders basically to, the water to run off the pavement into the shoulder and into the swales, so we, we do not want raised shoulders. And so you have a letter basically that lists every single one of Mr. Rowley's original comments and our responses, and then I'll, I'll let Tom go over his, his letter on the shape factor circles.
So I submitted a letter, it's December 7th, I think, Mr. Rogers submitted it with his package specifically to the, the shape factor, issue of lot shape factor, which is in your, your bylaw. So I attached to that letter some, a copy of the bylaws, you have it readily available when you're reading through it, as well as some, some visuals to kind of show the two lots in question. I know the last meeting when we were trying to talk through it, it was kind of confusing, so there are two exhibits which are attached that show the two lots in question in this 180-foot in diameter circle with proposed house lots on it, and then the small portions of either wetland or vegetated wetland that encroach into that circle.
For the, for the board, everyone understands that we're looking at the pink areas on lot 48 on the top, and I'm not sure the lot number.
52.
52 on the bottom, if I, if I may.
Yep.
That the, the zoning circle is, per Article 6, is required to be 100% upland, and the two pink areas are not, and this board has the right to waive that requirement if we see, if we see no detrimental effect to it.
Correct, yeah, so the, the letter goes to that effect that, you know, there is this bylaw in place that the, the waiver is available to the board, and we wanted to want to illustrate so you could see that it wouldn't have a detrimental effect on these lots, you know, that there's significant contiguous upland, there's plenty of areas for us to situate houses without encroaching on or having to have any setback relief. And then the last thing I included, just so, you know, to kind of bring your attention to some other projects in town that were recently approved where similar waivers were, were granted, whether it was the actual circle wouldn't fit in the lot, or there was wetlands or other things that encroached within that circle, and, you know, the board and the town approved those plans, just so you have some evidence that is, it is something that is by design, and that's why you do have the ability to, to waive that condition, because a lot of the times it's, it's difficult to place these circles on, on lots in this area without getting into a wetland area or something of that nature. So if you have any further questions on the letter, I'd be happy to try my best to answer them for you.
Mr. Schultz?
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Gay. I'm not sure if this is a question for you or perhaps Mr. Buckland. If for, excuse me. If, if the board decided to grant the waiver on a circle, these wetlands would exist on the lot, is that correct?
Correct.
We, yep. Okay, I just, I, that was what, can we put covenant and note, a restriction on the deed that says the, the future owner can't cut, mow, cut trees? We just went through a, a wetlands issue this week where the owner cut down trees in, in a wetland area. Can we note that on the deed somehow?
You, you can put an easement on, you can put an easement on the, on the properties as you see fit.
Is that a normal thing to do so that at least we're informing the homeowner they can't?
A lot of times the Conservation Commission, I don't know Wareham's protocol normally is, but sometimes they'll have you install some type of like a fence or a pipe or something that draws a delineation for the homeowner. Yeah, a monument, so you're, so if you're out mowing your grass after, you know, some things have grown up, you can see, here's a monument saying, "Don't go farther." So a lot of times conservation will do that, and that's the thing I, I think, you know.
You could do, you could do that as well if you wanted to.
Mr. Buckland, when, it's my, it is my understanding though that all the laws and regulations of the Conservation Commission still carry over, and, and all those protections will be there anyway, isn't that true?
That's, that's very true, yes.
But if they don't note it on the deed, homeowners are not aware of the, maybe not aware of the restriction, I'm just trying to.
Understood.
Yep, with, with the subdivision, so the plan that you approve gets recorded, and there would be, well.
Each, each individual lot is going to have its own notice of intent, and when we fill out the form, there's a deed reference, or in this case it'd be a land court certificate reference that goes on the forms that carries through to the order of conditions, and then, you know, so the scenario that you're talking about would come like well after people have done exactly what they should do, and there's a certificate of compliance issued.
Okay.
But.
I'm just thinking ahead, so we see reasonable to grant this waiver, I just.
Yes, we can protect.
Gets all the way carried through.
Yes.
And in this case, you know, they're going to be purchasing the lot having seen a plan upfront because of the need to protect, you know, first of all, it's a private association, but the need to protect people's views and to structure the homeowners' association documents in such a way that's fair to everyone, and that everyone's aware of upfront.
All right, so when we come to that point, we can discuss.
Yeah, we have no objection to some type of protection for that.
Thank you.
All right, so it's my understanding that the revised plans were prepared and delivered last Thursday?
Correct, yes.
So obviously, no one has had an ample opportunity to review them, especially Mr. Rowley, so.
Correct, and, and further, I would just say I, I had trouble myself just getting access to the town website today, so.
It's been down all day.
Sure, so, so again, a continuance to January 10th would allow all that information to be uploaded and, and reviewed by the neighbors.
So to the board, any questions on what we've learned tonight that you need covered before we move on?
Nope.
Mr. Baptiste? Ms. Gleason?
Yep.
Mr. Corbett? I'm sorry?
One thing we actually neglected to bring up, the guys went out and in a specific area, they, they broke the soil, so one of the thoughts we had was, we had standing water there because the soil's been so compacted over the years from lawn mowers and everything that it just couldn't penetrate the soil, so I'm, Bob knows exactly when they went out.
We refer to them as crushed stone wicks. I took a couple of pictures today just to show you, but so there's three very small crushed stone pads that were just installed, I, I believe, today, and so we think that that's going to basically show the effect of, you know, something like this being able to negate the, the compacted loam that, that is causing the problem.
Yeah, so we're hoping that these, these test pits will, will show that water can penetrate the soil, so when we go to development, whether we use lawn drains or something where it creates a easier way for the water to penetrate, will eliminate some of that ponding and allow it to.
Ponding?
As much as we possibly can, and facilitate it getting into the ground faster, so hopefully we'll get some rain, and we can see how they work.
Couple of times, I know I referred to the Smith Avenue project that we did for the town where just simply the excavation of a test pit took care of the problem. In this case, I told them, you know, five feet long, couple feet wide, no more than two feet deep, and, and we would refer to it as a, a wick.
Mr. Chairman, through you, what do you think, Charlie? Have you seen the lakes that were there?
I have. With respect to the, what you're talking about now in the drainage calculations, I did have a chance to just look at those very briefly. Although your interest is primarily the street drainage and so forth, at the same time, you should be concerned about the potential for runoff from the site to other, other properties, and that's one thing I did take a look at, I had mentioned it, I think, in my original letter, and taking a look at what has been presented from the Stormwater Management proposal that GAF put together, and comparing that to the contours of the plan. Each one of these, according to the Stormwater Management proposal, which you should have a copy of, they look like that, if you look in the back, there is a plan that shows the proposed location for each dwelling, and the fact that they will be raised up on mounds of some sort, now the final orientation and so forth of the mound, the shape of the mound may be subject to whatever happens with the Conservation Commission, but there's a couple of spots in there that were of concern to me, that if they're built similar to what is shown on that plan, you may end up with a trap pocket of water which will not get out because of the surrounding contours of the ground. So I would simply point that out now that we had to be aware of that, and the path of the runoff that gets finding to the water in the drainage calculations really hasn't been shown. We don't know where that water runs out because all they, all they have shown is the subcatchment areas, which are the, the watershed areas, if you will, where the water runs, where the surface water runs and collects, but it really doesn't tell you where its out point is. But there is a, a piece on the plan that will give you a little bit of guidance, if you would have turned to page seven of nine of the, of the plan, the subdivision plan.
Is this, is this the drawing that you were?
That's one of, that's one of two drawings that I'd point to, and I can just show you where that area would be. Some of a concern that I have, it isn't fully developed in my mind, but it just, I have a concern for it, so if you turn to page seven. If you look at the dotted line, which is just to the right of the cul-de-sac, and it's labeled as the flood zone line AE or VE 18, VE 19, and if you follow that down toward the bottom of the page, you'll come to the easement line, and it, it's a line which is parallel, it's a dashed line, and parallel to the proposed boundary line between the two lots 55 and 50, I gotta get my glasses on, 53 and 52.
Is it the dark one or the bottom one?
There are two lines there, one is a solid line, the one that's next to it, parallel to it, is a. The one that's next to it, parallel to it is a long dash line.
Yes.
All right. If you look right where that dotted line crosses those two. There are two lines that are, are running parallel there that look like a little break in the contours.
Okay.
For those maybe looking at the plan, finding out hard where it's right here.
Just an inch down and to the right from the cul-de-sac.
That's right. Uh, when you look at that in comparison to the contours that are on the storm water plan. I'm not sure the water will ever get there. I think the intention was, was to create a pathway for the water to get to the shore. But with the contours that are shown on the plan for the drainage, I'm not sure that it'll get there. Because there's a small pocket where the contour of elevation four and below is still going to be there. So I want to be sure that, um, when everything is said and done, and all of these contours are made on the property. That we haven't compounded the problem of trapping the water where it can be against someone else. Um, it's especially true for that lot fifty-three. Because that's right at the corner of Broadmarsh, I mean, uh, Robinwood Road and the Robinwood Road Realty Trust property. And the contours are critical right there. The other ones, it's not so much so, but in that particular spot it is. And there's also a buildup of land which is above the existing ground there that it's pitched right toward their property corner. So they need to address that and be sure that there's no adverse impacts to the abutting property there.
So yes, I, so I'd be happy to meet with Charlie and to review that in detail because. Um, and as I stated at the first public hearing, um, the reason that we are not having any potential to negatively impact the abutters. Is because we are preserving low areas on the property. Um, the, the design points are the, the IVW, there's a, um. The depressed area on lot fifty-one. Uh, this, the yard, the yard area here, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, and, and that closed contour that, that Mr. Rowley referred to. In a straight up heavy storm event. The low point in our road is at elevation five point six. And then we have our foot and a half deep swale. And, and if that swale were to ever overflow, it would overflow onto lot fifty-four. And it would basically pond between the house on lot fifty-three and the house on lot fifty-four. And that's absolutely why we're leaving that grade at elevation four, because it's, it's lower than. Uh, the abutment at Robinwood Road Realty Trust. In a similar sense, this, the yard for the, uh, what's now the main house, the yard in this area is, is very flat. Um, it's down at, uh, about four point eight. So it's almost a foot lower than our low point in the road. And we've, we very much want to make sure that there's a path from that to this cut. Is someone purposely put a cut in the retaining wall at this location? And the invert of that concrete is at elevation four point eight. So, and again, the reason that we put these wicks in. Is because if we need a wick on lot forty-nine or lot fifty-four in the yard area of the future homeowner. We're going to make sure that that runoff, that there isn't, no one wants to live with a puddle in between two beautiful homes. So, um. The design, that's why we feel the design protects the abutters. And, and now we are trying to make sure, we'll make sure that there's a flow path to that four point eight outlet. Now, you know, in a coastal storm, all the water is coming over the wall and, you know, that's a different situation. We're in the flood zone. But in a straight up rainstorm, we want to get from our road at five point six. To that. Um, opening at four point eight, if, if need be.
So, Mr. Rowley, you will continue your, uh, analysis of the new report. Um, Bob and I assume that you two are, um, willing and able to, um. Work with each other between now and the next meeting as, as necessary at your.
Um, right now, the only thing that really this board has any jurisdiction over is the, is the road construction. And I think by going to the design that they have, that they have, um. Greatly improved the potential for a lot less flooding, especially since the swale, uh, really wraps around the road. Uh, one of the things they'll have to be careful of is when they put in driveways that those swales are maintained by putting a, uh. Pipe underneath each driveway so that they're properly connected. Uh, whatever happens on the lot is going to be between, um, the applicant and the conservation commission. Because you're not really being, um, have any concern over the house construction at this point. Um, so I think the only thing you can really say in your decision is that, um. The final design of the, of the lot configuration and so forth should be such that there will be no impacts to the abutting property. Um, we realize that in flood conditions, when you've got coastal storms, yes, the entire thing will be done, will be flowed over. Um, that's the case with this particular land being so low. But during regular rainstorms, we want to be sure that that doesn't happen either. Uh, so we can take care of the storm drainage that's against the road. I'll look at that a little more detail with Bob. Um, maybe these wicks he's talking about will work. But that again is going to depend on the final location of the houses, the final grading. And how they attract the water to low points and how they manage that water once they get it there. He's already mentioned, he doesn't want a puddle between the two houses. So they've got to take care of that issue.
So I, I, Mr. Rowley, you bring up a really important point that I think, um, this board needs to be. Um, a hundred percent tied on as well as the public. And I know the applicant noted that the planning board. Their role in a subdivision plan is, um, is the road. As you, as you have commented to me many times and commented tonight to this board. And, um, and we can manage that and we can manage the lot layouts and we can, and we can talk about the, the zone, the frontage circles and things like that. But when it comes to the wetland, it's the conservation commission. But I'm also curious to hear your impression and Mr. Buckland yours too, on the Board of Health's role in a situation like this.
Well, the Board of Health, um, takes a look at the plan and they, from their perspective, take a look at it in terms of whether or not this public safety. Or any public concerns about the lots themselves. And they have the, the, uh, authority to write a letter to the consti, to the planning board. And they have a certain amount of time in which to do that. Uh, if they don't do it within forty-five days of the supplemental of the plan, it's assumed that they have no issues. If they do, then they have to deliver those issues to you in writing so that you'll be able to consider them. Um, you can't take any final action on the subdivision until the forty-five days has elapsed or unless you have heard from them in the meantime. Um, but, uh, again, so long as there is, uh, some, uh, conditions of approval set in place. That protects the abutting owners from the adverse impacts of runoff from anything other than the road. That's about all you could say. In my view.
Any comments?
I just have one.
Mr. King.
Um, so, you know, we're seriously considering the construction of the road, this, the drainage and whatnot. Do you have any concerns with, with Robinwood leading up to this new road?
I did take a look at it and are you speaking in terms of access?
Correct.
Um, I did take a look at it. It seemed to me that the side of the road where this property is located, if a lot of that vegetation was cleared out. To make it a little bit, um, uh, appear to be better for travel. That it would, um, offer the opportunity for people to pass a little more safely, even if one had to go over into the shoulder to do so. If a heavy truck was coming down the road. I'm not sure that it needs, uh, full construction, but clearing out some of the vegetation would certainly make it a lot better road to travel. That's just an opinion that I have, having taken a ride down there to take a look at it. It's grown in pretty well on both sides.
Yeah. I'd say it looks, it looked pretty narrowed to me.
That's, that's something that we can definitely look at with, with this rally and, you know, if it's clearing brush along, especially on. Any property line that's on our parcel, that's something we can, we can definitely do as long as we're not getting into any wetland areas. But, um, if cleaning that out gives you better line of sight, a little more width. I don't think we'd have any objection to, to doing that for sure.
I'm just, I'm looking at the, the layout of the lots and whatnot. And if you get out on to. Powers Road, Powers Avenue, you only have a little chunk of it.
Yeah.
So are you, are you going to run into issues where you might be able to clear out one side, but not the other? And we can't get it wide enough. Cause one of the folks at the last meeting made, uh, a pretty good comment. You've got some large expensive homes going in. And I think the. The traffic study was, you know, two cars per house, couple of trips a day. Which in my opinion is unrealistic. I mean, I've lived in a small community like this where it was just a small number of homes. And the affluent people, they have children who have cars. They order everything online. You've got Amazon, you've got UPS, you've got FedEx. So I think the, the, the twenty, I think it was twenty-four trips a day is what was noted in the, in the response. I think is a, is a little bit unrealistic. I, I'd be, you know, willing to bet that that twenty-four is probably more like fifty. I just want to make sure that they have a safe way to traverse that road without having to worry about. You know, putting an expensive car in the brush while a UPS truck goes by or something of that nature.
With, with respect to the, the roadway along our frontage, I mean, we can definitely look at what Charlie mentioned, clearing out some of the area. Um, seeing what that, what that does.
That presents.
We're open to, we want to be good neighbors. We want to fix the problems. So.
Yeah. I think there's a, there's a, there's a fine line to, to, to drive between. Making it safe enough by clearing out some brush that's overgrown to the road's edge. And, you know, clear cutting ten feet off the road and taking away the rustic field of the.
Exactly.
The travel path.
And we have to be cognizant of any wetlands that get up in that area too. So.
Okay. That was, that was, that's all I was.
Yeah. Mr. Baptiste, any comments, questions? Ms. Gleason?
Um, actually I'm curious about, you talked about buildable area, the buildable location on each of the lots, but I don't see a drawing of that.
On, well, it's the shape factor circles that's on the lot and plan.
You haven't, you haven't gone farther to define that than the circles.
So on the, on the letter I submitted, I think the, the first two illustrations, there's an illustration for lot. Forty-eight and fifty-two. I think it shows in both instances, it shows a proposed home location. That's kind of, you know, a little brighter or bolder.
Yeah.
And then it shows some potential ones. You can kind of see the footprint of the house moved around within that circle. If that gives you a little better idea.
Okay. Okay. All right.
It also, also shows up in the stormwater calculations toward the back of it. Uh, there are two sheets there. One is pre-construction, one is post-construction. The post-construction shows the location of each of the houses on each of the lots that they proposed to put in.
I think it's important to note though, that these, these aren't commitments, these are.
Not at all.
Correct. No, not at all. Yeah. Understood.
Now, I, I, I didn't hear everything you said, Ms. Gleason, but this, this, uh, the circle has nothing to do with where the house has to go.
Understood.
Okay.
I, I was under the impression that you were thinking that it, there was some.
Well, we're so.
Correlation between the two.
So every one of our lots fully contains the hundred and eighty, eighty foot diameter circle, which some of the examples that we provided. Um, it was allowed that the, that the circle go beyond the property line. And then we just have these small areas of wetland. And so again, we, we found a couple of examples where, uh, more than a third of the lot. Of, in that circle was wetland. Um, so there's, uh, precedence where the board in the past has found that, um. Not having a one hundred percent upland within that circle wa, was not, um, didn't, didn't derogate from the intent of zoning.
Okay. Yeah. And, and these diagrams actually explain, that was what I was looking for. Just as, no, that's it.
Mr. Schultz? Through you to Mr. Rowley. I, I understand that the board's purview is road construction. Uh, we also have to incorporate Board of Health. Are we not also. Uh, able to consider the, the sewer hookups as part of subdivision plan?
It has to show either, um, yeah, in this particular case, they have chosen to actually. Uh, make a connection to the municipal system. Um, doing so by means of. Separate ejector pumps in each dwelling. Through a force main that goes all the way to the intersection of Nanumet Street and Woodbury, I believe it is.
But we're allowed to, to, in terms of processing our decision. Um, think about that, that hookup. It's a very complicated, uh, hookup.
It is. And I had, I had made some comment about that in, in the previous letter that I had written to the board.
That, that's within our purview to consider that.
I believe it is.
But yeah.
There's ma, there's a mandate, there's a requirement, um, that if, if sewer, well. Right now we've slightly changed the route because there's a water main in Forest Street. So now we're going to use that. And so that's going to take the curse out of that original route that we had.
Oh, okay.
But, um, this subdivision control laws require us to connect.
Right. No, no, but I just meant that we, in terms of our decision, we have been thinking about that. Is that correct?
Okay. Yeah. I guess all I'm saying is we're complying with the, the language of the regulations right now that, that it's, it's within fifteen hundred feet. And so we propose to connect.
Okay. Yeah. Yes. Okay. That's, that was my question. So I just, cause I, I'm trying to think about that because it. It seems to be the hookup to be quite disruptive to the neighborhood.
Well, they're, they're proposing to, um, do it by directional drilling, which means that it won't be an open trench. But it is a long and circuitous route. There's no question about that. Uh, the one question that I did raise is if they're going, um, within the limits of private ways anywhere along the line. To show that they have the right to actually do that. Um, the comments was made, I think in the review that you have before you tonight. Is that, um, municipal maintenance perhaps has sewer easements in there, which they may have already. Uh, they may plow it, but I don't know that that necessarily extends to another private property owner. Going in there and doing something for his own benefit. So that's why I'm just saying, okay, make sure that you've got the proper right to go in there and do this. Because if you get halfway through the project and somebody says, you don't have a right to go through in this street, you, you have no rights at all, stop. Now, uh, there's a question as to where you go from there.
That makes my two part. Yes, we need to consider, and perhaps to the applicant. If it's some future meeting, you could, you could discuss or commu, uh. Comment on how that directional drilling is going to occur and how it may, uh, impact the neighbors.
And how you're going to get permission to do it.
So I, I can provide a letter on that. Briefly, we looked at it. It's land court parcel. So the, it's a little different than a normal plan where if you are abutting a road and it's a private way. You could be to own to the middle. It's all land court plans. So they have specific bounds on the road. And the deeds all reference the rights of egress and over it. There's municipal water lines in the road. There's some sewer in the road. The towns maintain or plowed and maintain this. So I'll, I'll provide something.
So I think the neighbors, the neighbors don't want to get surprised.
Correct.
By what's going to happen.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Corbett? Still concerned with water.
I think we're going to hear about that.
I understand what we're responsible for, but being there and seeing what was there after a large storm. And the location of the puddle comes, in addition to where the road is. I mean, it was up against the puddle. And these areas here of the gravel, uh, these are open areas that will remain open.
So that we're, we're did them with the intent to see how effective they are. And then ultimately the plan, wh, whether it's yard drains or something along those lines and strategic points, I think that's our goal. Our goal, as concerned as you are with water, my clients are concerned with water. They don't want potential buyers going out there and seeing a lake. They want potential spying going out there and seeing, you know, beautiful, an area and the views and, and everything. So our goal is to make the parcel better than it is today and address that issue as best we can. And that's, you know, what Bob will work on with, with Charlie.
Are you saying these are more or less a test?
That's, that's kind of how.
Well, a demonstration of what I had, uh, you know, said to the board a couple of times is.
I understand, but if I bought a house and this was in my yard. I'd cover it like the day after I got it.
There's, we can do different, different types of cuts like that with drain, drains where it will be more aesthetically pleasing to. Potential purchaser, but still effective.
I appreciate you guys being concerned, but after seeing the puddles there, it's one of my main priorities. If not my main priority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buckland, any comment?
No comment.
Mr. Shaheen?
No comment.
All right. I should have, um, for my own policy I put in place, I should have had a motion to open this public, this continued public hearing. I should have, um, for my own policy I put in place, I should have had a motion to open this public, this continued public hearing. And I will do that now before we go to public input. Um, that was my fault. I neglected to do that. So before we go to the public, could I have a motion to o- to open this continued public hearing, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Yes, second.
I have a motion from Mr. Corbett and a second from Mr. Schultz to reopen the continued public hearing on thirty-two, twenty-one. Uh, the Robinwood Road subdivision, Mr. Corbett. Vote. Hi, Mr. Schultz.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Swenson votes aye five zero zero. The public hearing is open. I will take comments from the public now. Please, come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, you'll be next, okay? I remind people that, that, um, our rules are three minutes to speak. Um, I'm asking you to come forward with new information that we haven't heard before. Um, in, in order to keep this productive and move along, if, if I feel that it's information that we have heard before, I'll ask you to move on. So sir, can you identify yourself?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Thomas Doneye, Twelve Sias Point Road. Thank you. Uh, the neighborhood is here tonight, as we've been coming to every meeting. The North Abada, the South Abada, the Aaron family, the Batalos, uh, Robinwood Road, uh, residents. And we're all very concerned about the stormwater. Now, I heard the measures being taken for the roadway. And, uh, I haven't heard anything yet for, for the virtually emergency situation on the southern border at the Botello residence. I didn't hear any test pits or anything about that. And with the northern border, the hundred and fifty-foot long uh, rain garden is directing eight acres of water into their fence into their property is what the plans look like. Uh, the snow storage plan is to push the snow towards the neighbors' fences. And if it piles up like that, there's going to be snow melt. And I just wanted to ask if the snow melt is part of the new stormwater calculations.
I don't know.
To the applicant, would he?
If you care to answer, Bob?
Well, sure. We don't, um, analyze, um, snowfall amounts in terms of drainage calculations, but um, you know, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to maintain a longitudinal grade of, of three quarters or a percent and have an established low point. When this road is snowplowed, basically, the snow would go onto the shoulders of the road and, and possibly then into the swale. Um, it would all stay very close to the road and, um, it's not like a big parking lot that you need to, you know, designate one area for excess snow removal. So, but it's not really related to the stormwater calculations.
So when the, when the snow piles up, there'll be snow taken off the property? Trucked off?
I, I would not expect to ever have to have that occur in this subdivision, that there's plenty of, uh, room on the property and, um, there would be no legitimate place to truck it to for disposal. I don't see the need.
Okay. On the traffic plan, I had asked in the past, the date, the traffic letter was, uh, the data was collected. The date and time. All we had was a date on the letter.
Correct. I don't recall that there was a counter put out. Um, the chip, I believe the trip generation, that, that this was basically done, uh, you know, by the book, so to speak, and um, looking at our seven homes and the impact of our seven homes on the street network and not a, um, I don't believe that we did counts. So it's by par. So the, the letter's dated November eighth. Um, I, I want to say, uh, so it was probably October. This was put together.
And Robinwood Drive is mentioned in that three times. Should that be corrected to Robinwood Road?
Well, it's an error, but, uh, doesn't, uh, it doesn't take away from the, um, validity of what they've done.
Okay, there's been testimony before that the fire department had asked for a twenty-foot wide road. And you said you were going to do the twenty-foot wide road. Now tonight, it's an eighteen-foot wide road. Has the fire department been informed?
I provided the fire department with the new plans, but we came in with a twenty-foot wide road. And, um, we were reminded that the subdivision regulations allow an eighteen-foot wide road. And so in addition to having three foot shoulders on either side, um, the current, the current roadway width meets the subdivision regulations, but we are waiting for confirmation that the fire department doesn't request, uh, changes, uh, to make it suitable for them.
Uh, will it be a central standby generator for all seven houses or will each house have their own standby generator? For the elevators and the sewage pumping? We're just concerned about the noise and the fuel storage and
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know.
I think we're getting a little far afield here.
Okay. And finally, on the parking, there's an online ad for the projects that states as three garage units and the photo show three garage, garage units. Has that been changed since the original testimony about there'll be two garages for each house?
Um, I'm, I'm just not familiar with how many, but I, I don't recall seeing those pictures. I take you at your word that if it's, uh, showing three garages, that's, that's the intent right now.
Now, please, please let me remind that the, the, the structure is not the purview of this board.
And will these documents be on, on the web, posted on the web? Excellent. Is there a meeting at the com con yet? Is that scheduled?
No, sir, I have not filed a notice of intent yet. Um, I think I, I'm going to try and do that between now and, uh, the next planning board meeting. Um, there's most likely we'll get their second meeting in January. I would, I would have to file a notice of intent this, this Wednesday to get the first conservation meeting in January. I'm not going to be able to do that. So when we file the notice of intent, we'll be on the second, uh, meeting in January, uh, which will be the third Wednesday with conservation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Uh, Michael Bessie, thirty-nine, Robinwood Road. I believe the road commissioners have met on, uh, this subdivision, uh, specifically to discuss Robinwood Road. Are their findings, uh, pertinent to your committee? And if so, are you aware of them and what did they say?
I am not aware of, um, of the road commissioners discussing Robinwood Road. I think we're lucky tonight that we, there's someone here that can, that can tell us the answer to that. Is Robinwood Road on the road commissioner agenda?
Uh, I'm chairman of the road commission and, uh, we have, we've only discussed that, uh, we want to look at Robinwood Road, have Dave Menard from the municipal maintenance go out and look at it and, uh, take a, a view about what improvements he thinks are necessary for Robinwood Road. We have not made any statement though otherwise.
Is this, and, and Mr. Buckland, is this in regard to this proposal?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Andrew Batalo, fifty-two, Robinwood Road. Gentlemen, at the end of the day, when this is approved or not approved, we'll be there. These people were not. So I'll probably have water in my property. I'll probably be having a chaos, try to get out of that street. And they believe everything's going to be okay. But gentlemen, we live there. We need some consideration. I hope to, the board takes that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Olivera. I, um, live on Fairview Lane, right off of Robinwood Road. Been there for decades. We won't say how many decades. Anyway. I have dealt with developers, one-on-one, one on a committee of developers. And I think we all can agree that the main focus, the mission of a developer is to get in, to buy, to develop and to leave. Mission accomplished. We who have been there for many years are left holding the bag. And somebody mentioned an ordinary rain. Are we having ordinary rains anymore? I don't think so. How many years before? We used to have five or six hurricanes. How many did we go up to this year? Did we complete the alphabet? I think we got close to the end and coming over again. I remember talking directly to a developer just a few years ago. When I picked out something that he was illegally doing and it would impact my property, his comment was, you know, Mary, live and let live. Oh, okay. Is Jesus your friend? Sure, I know him well, you know, so we know again, the mission of any developer is to get in, to develop, make money and leave. Leaving the rest of us to deal with. However, many of us will live that long. This is a multi-generational board that I'm looking at. We're depending on you guys. We're relying on you guys based on your wisdom, your insight, your knowledge, your honesty and your application of all that you know to hold any developer profoundly accountable. Because if you don't, what's going to happen to the rest of us? Are we going to have a water problem? Are we going to have a traffic problem? We're going to deal with it when everyone else has gone to the bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? We have someone online? Okay. Please work. Marlene, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Okay, um, I will try not to go over what's already been said. So I had sent this letter today and I had a lot of problem. I couldn't get through and I couldn't look at any plans because of the town website. But here's the letter that's supposed to be posted for everybody to look at if they want to, when it does get fixed. So first, I strongly object to all the waivers that are proposed and feel that the state and local laws are there to protect me and the other neighbors. The rain garden, as I understand it, is a stormwater filtration system and it's going to be sending the stormwater to the wetlands, which is right next to my carriage house, which sits right on the property line. And I'm concerned that eight acres of water that has flooded the site for over twenty-five years and usually sat there for days is going to be redirected to this rain garden. I mean, I heard what they were saying about the swales and that, but isn't the rain garden supposed to be taking the water? So here's the question. If the planning board grants these waivers and the definitive plan is approved and my property floods, what can I do? That's the question.
I'm, I'm not going to even begin to try to answer that. I don't think this board should either. You have many options available to you and those, that's for you to decide. Bob, you have a comment you care to make?
Just to be clear, that, um, the rain garden is no longer a part of the drainage design. The drainage design is simply the swale that is close to the road that goes all the way around, so there is no more, no more rain garden.
Okay, um, so to, so to be clear, uh, new plans were submitted uh, Thursday there, and I don't know if they're on the web, on our webpage now or not. Uh, usually takes a couple of days, but as you know, the web, the town web site was down today and none of us could get at it, so, um, but your comment is heard.
Okay, so the next question is, why are they not considering a retention pond? To keep the, all the water right on the subdivision?
I'll, Bob, that's only, only you can answer that one if you care to.
Sure, um, so again, we have, um, four or five localized areas on the private property where the stormwater is going to flow to, and we have the swale system which takes care of the road itself. Um, and so basically, if we need to provide additional, um, infiltration systems just for the yards for the homes, we don't believe that we will need to, but, but that's why we had those wicks installed.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. So, um, I know that you said that you're going to be mostly concerned with the roads. But I'm concerned with my solar deck array, which is right next to one of the proposed homes. Who is going to look at that house? And is there a shade study or something that's going to protect my investment?
So we, we, basically, we have a right to put a home that meets the setback criteria in zoning. And, uh, and the planning board, you know, has their responsibilities under subdivision control. Um, that she's correct in stating that this, the solar array was placed right up against the property line. Apparently it didn't need to meet setbacks, but, um, you know, uh, we're going to put the home, you know, that conforms to the zoning setbacks and, uh, that's, that's what we'll do.
Well, I actually did talk to Mr. Buckland and he said that you cannot build a home that's going to block a pre-existing, but I guess we'll all figure that one out. And my solar is not right up against the lot line. Okay, next one. So now going back to the road, when does, you know, the board look at mitigation money and a performance bond? We know that Robinwood Road is going to get damaged by their construction vehicles and by the traffic. So that question is when?
So part of the subdivision, uh, process is um, a guarantee by the developer and that guarantee can be accomplished in several ways. And we haven't even begun to discuss that at this point. And I, I just want to comment, we don't know anything about what damages is going to happen to the road. It could happen, it is potential, but to state that you know that it's going to happen, I, I'm going to have to challenge you on that, so.
We'll see. Um, yeah, and I
Last question, please. Last question.
Alright, my last one.
Did we lose her?
No, 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 I had like four more, but I wanted to see which one I could pick from my last one. Um, well, okay, going with the road. I brought this up last time. The driveway that's closest to Forest Street or Forest Ave, I still believe is going to be contentious as far as traffic coming off of Sias Point, coming onto Sias Point, coming from Forest with people, bicycles and a neighbor, you know, from the new house backing out onto that road. And the traffic study that was done November, dated November eighth, which was, uh, you know, probably at a time when there was less traffic, you know, during COVID, um, doesn't even talk about that. So the question is, should we have a new traffic study that addresses that?
That will be at the pleasure of the board, and we haven't, we haven't discussed that at this point. We will make note of your concern, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Anyone else in the room? Seeing none, I will entertain them. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. This will be our last comment tonight.
He doesn't, he doesn't have a mic. Has someone online wish to speak?
Yeah, we're trying to get, there's one-
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right. I think they don't know that they're able to speak right now.
If you want to say that, I don't have a mic.
Jay Freeman, you're on, you're up on, on the Zoom. I think you're muted. Nothing? Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll stop at that then. I would entertain a motion to continue. Robinwood, 33, 3221 subdivision two, January 10th. So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King. Many discussion. Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. Five zero zero. The meeting is continued. Bob and Tom, I expect, if you have any questions, please reach out to Charlie. Let's make it productive and keep things moving. You know, I used, I got you down for the things you're going to do on, on, on the sewer, right? Okay, great.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Everyone have a great holiday.
Thank you.
See you in 2022.
Yeah. Thank you. Give me a second.
If any members of the planning board are planning on keeping, you can, welcome to keep what I gave you in terms of the copies of stuff. If you don't want to, just put them back nice and open them back in the folder, but if you want to keep them for your own records, that's fine. Less paper for me. So totally up to you, because we have a copy of all that in the folder already for our file.
Okay. Bay Point.
Not that good, yeah. It's like the overflow.
All right, so I should have, I should have opened the last session immediately with the reopening of the continued hearing, so I would take a motion now to reopen the public hearing for project 3621. Special permit site plan review at the Bay Point Club modification to. Do I have that motion? No. So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Schultz and a second by Mr. King. Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. King. Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. The public hearing on Bay Point is modifications to the special permit site plan review is now open. We will hear from the applicant. Oh, Mr. Fay. Mr. Reynolds. I assume that you have seen report by Mr. Rowley.
We have, yes.
And are here to initiate this discussion tonight with a response to saying.
Correct, and we've submitted that response. We assume that you have those responses.
Working on that now.
Okay.
We had a bad IT day today.
Yeah.
Sure. Mr. Rowley, have you had an opportunity to review this?
Eliminating degree, I have, yes.
Do eliminated?
We only had-
Some comments that I've talked about with Mr. Fay today, but I haven't been able to go over the entire project.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we only, for the letters, only three copies, and so you got the one for the board right there.
Okay. I apologize for that. So I think the best thing to do is just allow you guys to go through your points one by one to the board. Does that make sense?
Sure.
With your pleasure.
Okay, off of Mr. Rowley's comment letter, is that what we're thinking? So I'll go on the general side of the program with respect to the legal documentation. The assignment documentation has been executed by the Bay Point Group. It has been submitted to the town. I sent it earlier today to Mr. Buckland that addresses some of the early comments and Mr. Rowley's analysis as to how the title is going to travel from the original land disposition agreement was between Stone Street Corporation and the town. It is now between the Bay Point Club and the town, so that documentation is submitted, executed by our side, submitted to the town, so we will wait to receive either an executed copy back or a comments.
Can you help me here? I saw an email thread between town council.
Yeah, I've passed on the, actually, the document that was provided by, by Stone Street to town council for review. And I'm assuming we'll be able to execute it fairly quickly, maybe this Thursday.
So it's, by reading that email thread, it was my understanding per town council that there's nothing to stop us from continuing down the road of reviewing this request for modification.
That's correct. You can continue on the review. This, this didn't hold up anything.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, were we provided with that email thread?
I don't remember. I would be probably not. I will, it's pretty brief. It just says to continue on.
Well, I'm concerned that the whole board doesn't have awareness of all the communications that are going on on a, on a public project.
I will, I will forward those notes to you. Thank you. Mr. Fay.
So we submitted our plans to the town. The town submitted the plans to the fire department. There was a letter that came out this afternoon. The gentleman that was reviewing the plans had some time off. We, we thought we were in good shape with them earlier in the week. Posted up with them midweek, thinking we were still in good shape, and today they came back and said they'd like a little more time to review the plans. Do you have?
Yeah, some of Rich's comments, the fire prevention officer was, he didn't have any issue with the project. Some of his comments were on the entrance in, on that little side road. He was fine. He wanted the truck to enter into that. He didn't need it to turn back around to the left. It could still go in the flow of traffic, so it could kind of go on a one-way in and one-way out and continue down Bay Point Drive, so he wanted the radiuses to be opened up a little bit on the entering and not have to take the, you know, going back to Onset Ave. That was one of his comments. He had a couple of comments about the fire hydrant locations. I said, that's fine, just put that onto the plan where you're looking for to that. He wanted the actual copy of the truck turning radiuses on the plan, which they've done, and he was going to show them that. And I think that was pretty much everything else. He was pretty much okay with. That was his only comments. As I understand, his only reason for delays, wanted to bring it through his deputy and make sure onto there. So that was kind of his, overall, he was okay with it in terms of those kind of technical questions in terms of turning radiuses and that. And that's kind of where he thought he'd be able to get the letter out a couple of times this week, but with his deputy still needs to review it.
Okay, so I suppose I'm going to just kind of bounce down this, this letter. And I'm, I'm not going to address the engineering side of it. Charlie, Mr. Rowley and I had a conversation this afternoon. There's some technical things that are answered here from Principi's office, and Mr. Buckland and Mr. Principi should be able to communicate and work through that. Is that a fair characterization of some of the plan-related comments, Mr. Rowley?
Yeah, I think it's fair to appraise the board of what those issues are, but as far as, you know, the discussion of the technical aspects of it and everything, I think you're right. Between Mr. Principi and myself, once we come to a meeting of the minds, we can present that to you. But I think you need to know ahead of time what my concerns have been, a part of which are noted in the letter. And you can see what their response of, I'm still not happy with their response. So we need to discuss that further with regard, especially the stormwater. But there were a couple of other issues that I had in this letter too, that I think you need to at least be appraised of, so. Go ahead, and we'll take it one by one, see where we go.
Okay, so one of the issues that was raised today in my conversation with Mr. Rowley was the thought that the parking space at nine by eighteen, which is what we're requesting for our residential use. We need relief to do that. The zoning requirement is nine and a half by nineteen, right? Half a foot and one foot. But we were of the opinion in our submission that that is a decision in the CR zone that you can make. Mr. Rowley informed me that he thought that was an item that required a zoning variance. So we, I posted back up with our law firm, and we think that's a decision in the CR zone for the board to make. So that becomes a question to you. Do you have the authority to consider that request on our behalf, or do you think it is a zoning matter?
Let me try.
I would have to go back and reread specifically the, the CR zoning stuff, and I've recently done that, and I don't remember. What I, let me say this, unless it specifically says that the planning board has the right to grant a waiver to one of the terms and conditions in that CR, then I don't think we do, and I don't remember that it says that. I've been reading too much, and I, you know, so you can't hold me that, but unless-
I understand.
Does it specifically say the planning board has the right to do that? I doubt it does.
Kind of, we think, we think that the planning board has the authority to deem as it seems appropriate what those spaces are. So I see Mr. Buckland is-
The whole development, I mean, the whole challenges of the CR district was, is that it actually is able to, the planning board, work with the developer to define a lot of things, density and everything. I think one of the challenges dating all the way back was there was no real rules. It was something that had to be, you know, developed through that.
And that is the intent of Mr. Chairman of the, of the CR district, in that the planning board gets the opportunity to define the uses, the dimensions, and this, all the standards that are necessary for the development of the project under the, under these regulations. It's found under section 580.9, subsection three, dimensional requirements. The planning boards shall determine the appropriate dimensional requirements during the hearing on the special permit application, notwithstanding any provision of this bylaw to the contrary. There is also a parking section later on as well, too, and it doesn't restrict the dimensions by that, by the standard of parking. It's the intent of this district to allow flexibility for the developer and negotiate the design standards with the planning board when the planning board does its review. And it's just a special permit.
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question while you're researching that? So i- if you're looking for relief for that extra half foot wide, what, what does that give you for parking spots per unit?
So right now, previously in the plan, it was, I think, a little confusing, created a little bit of confusion. The parking was just shown to be ninety-seven spots on the outside of paved parking spots. It didn't include the garage spots. So right now, on the paved park, it was ninety-seven, and you add the actual garage spots, you get another twenty-three. So that puts you up to a hundred and twenty-one spots, and then in front of the garage, you could put another spot, you know, if somebody perilled or-
So there's, there's no covenant that says all cars need to be in the garage at night?
No. No.
So I guess the long and the short-
So you'd have, so altogether, you'd have a hundred and thirty-seven spaces if you used four spaces.
For how many units?
Fifty-two.
So you'd have about a hundred and four.
Still coming up, less than two spots per house.
Fifty-two, so it'd be a hundred and four.
Two would be a hundred and four.
And then we got thirty-three extra spots.
Okay. I just, the, the reason I asked that is I had the unfortunate experience of being on a board of trustees for a condo complex that was built in the, you know, seventies, that had one parking spot per unit, and it turned into an outright disaster. It was a horrible situation that we never did correct.
We're, we're at two and a half per unit.
I'm sorry, Michael. I didn't hear any of your questions or the answer. Did I miss anything?
Well, they, they, they kind of helped me form a second question, so I asked them how many spaces they ultimately end up with if we give them relief for the width. And then they, between the parking spots, the garage, and one car on the drive, they end up with two and a half per unit, which is nice. But if that's the case, why do you need the relief if you've got overage?
Well, we could do less parking. If we were to calculate at nine and a half and nineteen, we wouldn't have that many parking spaces.
Understood, but would you still have a minimum of two per unit?
We would absolutely have two, yes.
But the same amount of pavement.
Same amount of pavement.
I'm a dork-dang guy. I don't like nine-foot-wide parking spots. That's, I'm the guy that parks in the corner of the lot, and his wife nags him because they get a lot.
I get it. Like to speak to the-
So quickly looking at this, I think you have a good case to, to the case being, does the planning board have right to adjust in here? I need to look at this closer, and I need to talk to these, but I think, I think, I think you're right. I think Mr. Buckland's right, is how you explained it makes sense, and planning board gets to do a lot of things. If, if you can read it, it's hard to read, but I'm looking at the parking requirements, and I'm, but I'm wondering if the parking requirements are specific to off-street versus, because off-street, do, do your parking spots, are they considered off-street?
They are considered off-street, yes.
All right, then, I believe you're right, and, but I'm going to confirm, so, all right, so, but-
We, we prepared the plan with that expectation. And if that was not the correct assumption, then we'll- And if that was not the correct assumption, then we'll, we'll adjust, but that was how it was submitted.
So give us, give us till the next meeting, but I, I would with the boards, I would recommend you, you proceed under the assumption that you already made.
Right.
What I'm, based on what Jane and I just looked at here. I got a headache from looking at it too, so let's move on.
And they're done that.
So we've updated the impact statement and we've submitted that to answer some of the questions that were raised in Mr. Rowley's letter. With respect to the sewer side of the program, Chris would like to
So, so the sewer is, is, is kind of connected between phase one, phase two, three and four. So what happens is phase one, this new phase four, a portion of phase two, all drains gravity wise to the existing pump station, which is sized accordingly for the flow. The existing pump station will then pump to the new pump station in phase two, which will then ultimately go out to the, to the roadway under a force main. So those are all then calculated and sized properly for that. So that is how the plan was designed.
Mr. Rowley, you want to jump in at any time? Feel free.
Yeah, my, my feeling, if I can go back to the parking for a minute, if you've settled that fine. I think when, when the CR district talks about density and dimensional, it's talking about building density and building dimensional setbacks and that type of thing. If you've made the decision that, that the nine by eighteen spaces are fine, then we'll put that to rest. I would be concerned about that.
Five eighty dot ten is specific to parking requirements and specifically calls out that may result in reduced.
I think that's probably referring to the number of spaces, not necessarily dimensions of the spaces, but I'll leave that up to
Sure.
Further discussion. With respect to the sewer, the particular question I had, and with the explanation I got from their engineer, which came from Boyd Co, I believe.
Right.
I wasn't clear exactly what was happening there because all of the effluent from this project is going into the current pump station, which is also the pump station, which is taking phase one, and it's also taking the condominiums at Bay Point. So my question then was, was the capacity of the pumps that are in that station large enough to take the additional flow at that point? I realized that everything from each one of these is going to end up at the new pump station, which the units themselves have just been installed the last couple of days, not the interior part, but the, the structures themselves have been put in place. And I realize that they will be taking everything. So those will have to be looked at also in terms of making sure that the pumps are big enough that the rate at which they come on is going to be something that those pumps can handle. So that was my question, and it was not exactly clear in the letter that we got from Boyd Co that that's what they were trying to tell me. Maybe they were, but it wasn't clear to me.
So Chairman, did we get comment from the board sewer?
I believe we did.
Did they speak to this issue?
I just don't remember. No, Mr. Buckland, can you help me? Guy, guy has responded recently on a couple of projects. He responded on this one, didn't he, that it's in the original calc? Right, and that's all, it was very brief.
That's right.
The sewer commissions, I believe, they've approved the flow for the entire project, including these units that are being proposed. So that question is moved.
And you're talking about how to get it there.
And, and I talked to Guy today, actually, again about that, and, and these are private stations, so he's, doesn't have to worry about them. So one of the things in part of our agreement originally was there's a line that has to be redone on, on onset of. And the deal is that has to be done before these next homes in phase two, phase three gets put in place. And that's this off-site work and off-site plans already in place. So nothing's changed with that. So before any of these new homes come in, that work will be done. And that was his original concern still, you know, is still valid. Nothing has changed from there.
But you understand Charlie's point?
Yes. We tried, he tried to answer, Boyd Co tried to answer that question. I don't think did it succinctly, but that we discussed it many times personally with Boyd Co, so he was trying to say that.
Okay, so there's a couple of different comments with respect to density that maybe we could sit and address for you. I, in a couple of them, did not quite understand the question. So if we want to discuss density, I'm, I'm happy to do that in some of the questions that were asked, Mr. Rowley.
Specifically?
So specifically, there's a, a calculation of density in phase one and two that we then bring this project on and there's the, the observation of a correlation between the two, and I didn't understand that question. Or I didn't understand what the question was.
Well, the, the original special permit, which you have, which is for phases one, two and three, allowed for a certain density based on the square footage of your proposal and the number of units that were there. You have eighty four units in phases one, two and three on a given amount of land. You're taking fifty two units and putting on a parcel land, which is separated from everything else, increasing the density on that parcel. That changes the actual density of the entire project. If you were to average it out, the density would have to increase because you have not increased the area of land proportionally to the number of units that you've shown. So my point in making that was that I think the board needs to agree to the density that's shown on this parcel first. And secondly, to modify the, the special permit, which allowed the density of the, what you did for phases one through three. If they agree, the density should be left. That's also of the purview of the board.
I agree with that. I, I
But I was simply trying to make a point that your special permit allowed a certain density based on phases one through three. Now you've added a fourth phase, which does not have the same density. It's different. It's much higher.
But we could never meet that. This, the phases, early phases are on a hundred and forty seven acres that are a golf course. So we've got a plethora of land that
Well, presumably, presumably this parcel that you're dealing with through the PNS agreement, which you're modifying, will link it to the golf course in some way.
So to be
The density I'm talking about is the density of the lots for phases one through three. There's a certain density within those lots, which are separate from the golf course.
Correct.
If you take that density and compare that to the density of this lot with fifty two units on it, this density is much higher.
So that's not in this letter, the question that you just posed, and I did not do that calculation. This density would be higher than that density, but the design of the project is different. Right? We've got single family homes.
I think, Mr. Rowley's, Mr. Rowley's point is, is that he would like this board to see what the densities were on phase one, phase two, phase three, and now with phase four and how they're changing. Because we, in, we do have the right to, not the right, we have the, the privilege to approve or disapprove. We just need to see the numbers and understand what they are. Am I saying this correctly? I didn't mean to put words in your mouth.
If you agree with the density, then you simply modify the special permit appropriately. If you think it should be something else, again, it takes modification.
Now, I don't know that we went through this process on two and three, though.
You didn't, because it was set up through phase one.
We did?
It was already part of phase one's approval, so we weren't modifying that.
Okay.
When that was
So
So the interesting objective analysis in this is a different product type, a different use. So it's a smaller unit organized differently in a town home
Sure.
building. So I'm not sure what, Mr. Rowley, what would the standard be to reconcile that use with respect to, to land? How would you do that?
I think you would have to take a look at the plan itself. The number of units, their orientation to each other, how they relate to the golf course, because one of the, one of the things which is most critical in the CR district is that whatever development you do is connected some way so that it's a part of a mixed use. The CR district requires that it be a mixed use development. So in some way, these units have to have a relationship to that golf course, otherwise it will not comply with the CR requirements.
And, and what, what, what is the definition of that relationship? I don't understand your, I don't understand what you're saying. Relationship by proximity, by joining the golf course, by what is the
How does it relate to them in terms of the visual impacts that you see? The ability of the people who live there to use and occupy the golf course or the land surrounding the golf course, the same as everybody else does in phases one through three?
What I, what I, what I would suggest. May I suggest that we understand the phase one, two, three densities. We add in the the area of land for phase four, and we add in the number of units for phase four and report back to the board what that new density for the overall project is. And so we can understand how that number has changed. And you ask a very valid question in terms of how does, how do we define relates to mixed use golf course? You can talk about it's all owned by the same place. You can talk about it. It butts a golf course. You talk about ownership gives you privileges at the golf course of some kind. I don't know. But what, what those are, but it is the CR mixed use district. So Mr. Rowley does have a point that, that, that this, this phase four is, needs to be an integral part of the, of the whole, of the whole project and
I agree with that. And it is through proximity. It has the same rights and privileges of phase one, two and three. There is no so, so when this was drawn up, I thought it was important that the golf course remained independent of the residential housing development. I think that gives the most opportunity for people to enjoy the golf course. So it is a quote unquote semi-private experience. We have some memberships. And it's at a very affordable rate. When we did the residential development, including this phase of development, we never put a requirement on the unit owners to join the golf course because we don't want a unit owner to feel like it is subsidizing the golf course, and we don't want to limit the golf course activity to just unit owners. It's a, it's, it's a public semi-private environment. So all of the units there share that same relationship and experience with the golf course. And the clubhouse, obviously, once we get that renovated, will service all of the various phases. And I think in addition to that, other areas of being open to the public, that, that will take advantage of that operation.
So like for the clubhouse, you don't need to, for a clubhouse, you don't need membership or anything. So all of these residents would have those kind of benefits to it. So obviously a walking distance to the
Mr. Schultz. Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Rowley, how was the relationship established in the special permit for phases one, two and three? I mean, how, how was that established?
Ultimately through the total area that is within the defined phase one, phase two, phase three subdivision plans that were approved by this board.
So it was just an area?
It was an area, and within those areas, there are eighty four
I understand, I understand about the density. I was trying to understand how the relationship was previously established, so we could continue that.
By simply initially by showing the location of all those houses and how they related to the golf course and how it was really connected to it by the fact that it was in their backyard. That was one of the things, as I recall, that was sort of discussed. And the, the number of units, the number of units in the area defined by those units was ultimately established through that phase one. And that's how I got to the density number that I'm talking about. So it's
Okay, I understand the density is changing. I was just trying to understand how do you establish that relationship?
All right, let's move on.
So throughout this letter, we've provided a lot of updates that I suppose Mr. Rowley needs to have the time to review to see if they're accepted or if there's additional information required.
A lot of engineering type details.
To some extent, but at, at some point in time, the board's going to have to take a look at those plans, decide for itself, you know, whether either my comments are valid or, or yours are, or we mutually agree on what they are. That's for sure. But I think the board needs to take a look at those plans as well. You've got the comments from both myself and, and Bay Point. They have the location of a mailbox shown that I commented on. They've suggested that trash pickup will be curbside. That leads me to a question about where the curbs, curbside pickup will be, given the landscape plans pretty much dominate where you could put one. But that's another issue. So I think that some of these questions, even though they might be discussed between Tom and me, technically, there are still issues that need to be decided by this board such as that, so.
What I, I will say, what I have found works best, though, is that working outside of this forum, engineer to engineer, if you will, and resolving the many technical issues in getting those out of the way, that those will, those will impact some of the higher levels that Charlie feels need to be brought to this board. And he's, and he's generally right about those, but I think we're at a point right now, we're early in the game and we just need to start knocking them off. And that's the best way to be productive.
Right.
You agree?
I do. I do. So if we were to go to go to the design of the building, for example.
Well, as you know, I shared with you, I hope you had a chance, Ms. Gleason here has put together some thoughts.
Right. So all of those excellent thoughts, we've got this concept that lays out the utilization of the building to the land. We've got a schematic design. It's not in final form. In talking to Chris Henderson, who couldn't be here this evening, each and every one of your points were spot on that continue to get worked into the final set of plans and specifications. At this point, we're in the schematic design side of the program. Am I all words making sense to you?
Yeah, absolutely. I understand that they're really preliminary drawings and I just, I mean, I'm happy also to have, similar to what you were saying about Charlie, to have a conversation with you outside of this meeting. We don't need to go into the weeds in this meeting, so.
So in, in talking to Mr. Henderson, who is the architect, he's like, absolutely, looking to engage and expand. And there's just things at this point that were referenced that aren't there yet.
Sure, absolutely. I totally understand. It's a process to design a building and, and you're in the early stages of it, but you know, it'd be great to have a conversation now because then things can happen easier to roll them in.
So each of the points that were raised in your, in your letter, he absolutely will engage you and he's, he's like, we're going to incorporate all of these things and answer all of these questions at the next iteration as we go from schematic to
Absolutely.
More detailed plans.
I would be happy to make myself available to have a conversation on top of the letter.
Point, point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Is it appropriate for a board member to meet with the applicant outside of the public hearing?
I have no reason to think not.
I believe it's not allowed under public meeting law.
Can anyone help me there?
It, it happens quite frequently, whether it's, it's legal or not, it
I'm just sitting there thinking, I, if it's not legal, boy, they're going to put me in jail.
If it's not legal, I'm not doing it.
I'm, I'm concerned that if, if meetings are happening with the applicant outside the purview of the board, then the board and the public is not aware of the content of those meetings.
The fact is that the subcommittee can be formed by the, by the board and meet with the, the developer.
Is that how we do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I make us, can we as a board create a subcommittee of one?
Yes, you can.
Okay, then, then that's what we'll do, but we don't need to do that with the town engineer.
No, Charlie is a consulting engineer.
All right.
He's not a voting member of the board.
Okay.
I'm not a voting member of the board either.
Well, you, you would be if somebody was, was absent from the-
All right, let's take a, a quick pause here. The idea on the table is, is that this planning board create a subcommittee of one person, i.e. Mrs. Gleason, to work with Stone Street's architect and share some thoughts on what she thinks might be some things for them to consider. I am a thousand percent in favor of this collabor- corroboration, did I say that right, cooperation? Collaboration, thank you. And would hope that we can do that. Comments?
I'm not comfortable with it and certainly no agreements or commitments can be made.
It would be my understanding that Ms. Gleason would come back, would, would be not enabled to make a commitment of any kind and come back to this board and report the results of those discussions and allow this board to make any and all decisions.
I'd have to agree with that statement.
Yes, absolutely, I would report.
Mr. Baptiste, that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
May I comment?
Of course, please do.
That's no different than what I would do or have done in-
Except you're not, you're not a voting member and you can't make commitments.
That's correct, but I can't make the deals for the board either. Anything that I say comes back to you as a recommendation. If we agree on certain things, then it still comes to you as a recommendation. If we don't, I let you know. So I would think the same process would, would go on here.
All that being said, I'm hearing at least three heads nodding up and down. I think we can carry this four to one at minimum. I would entertain a motion that this planning board create a subcommittee on the architectural review of the Bay Point Phase Four project. Now, subcommittee to be Ms. Gleason, who will meet and, and share thoughts with the architect for Bay Point, Bay Point Phase Four and report back to this board the results of those conversations and any recommendations she may have.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. King and a second by Mr. Corbett. Any further discussion? Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. Corbett.
Hi.
Mr. Schultz.
Abstain.
Mr. Swenson votes yes, it'll be four zero one, congratulations. I banged right through that, didn't I? Good God. Thank you for-
So if I may comment on that?
Please.
I think that's fabulous. I think that if it, if it weren't our group here, Mr. Schultz, it's, it's another group, anytime your group can give direction or opinion or assistance for people sitting on this side of the table to get in the box that you're trying to get people to get into. It's really helpful because sometimes it's a bit of a guessing game from where we sit as to whether or not we hit all the boxes without having the ability to communicate and to, and to get opinion. And when it comes to the professional side of the program, there's so much of what we do that is, I, I always say it's art and science, right? We got a whole bunch of things that are cut and dry. The answer is yes, the answer is no, it's a light switch, it's on, it's off. But we've got a subjective activity in our business that takes place that is of personal opinion, it's of personal taste, it's not the code requirement, it's not the things that are necessary based on your regulations. It's the things that are collaborative, that create neat space, that create neat environments. And to be able to have a discussion like that from someone who can then get a sense as to what we're thinking and collaborate and then communicate it to the board, that's huge, that's a huge benefit. Not to our group, to any group sitting on this side of the table, my own personal opinion, for what it's worth.
Mr. Chairman, please, Mr. Gay.
Yes.
I appreciate and fully understand and support what you're saying. I don't think that site plan review, once we've opened a public hearing, is that process, I think design review and other processes which occur before we begin public hearings are those places.
Okay.
Once we open it to the public hearing, my opinion is the public needs to hear all discussions. That's, that's my feedback to you. I, I hundred percent agree with all of that design work, collaboration, but I think it needs to happen before we begin public hearing.
Okay. Excellent. So we continue to, to look forward to those discussions.
I don't, but we can figure that out.
Are there, are there other areas of our submission to you that members would like to question us on, that we can give you additional information on?
I'm not prepared at this time, Mr. Corbett.
No.
Mr. Schultz.
I have a follow-up question from the last meeting, but it's not specifically related to your comment today.
Let me, I'll come right, I'll come back.
You can come back to me.
Mr. King, any, any more questions at this point?
None.
Mr. Baptiste.
Ms. Gleason. I remember.
All right, Mr. Schultz.
Yes, at the end of the last meeting, Mr. Rowley and Mr. Buckland were helping me understand covenants. We were discussing some commitments on phase one about paving.
Yes.
And I, and you said there was some imminent paving, I'd just like to get an update on that.
So we came back that, that week and the paving started with the preparation of the driveways and aprons and that work was complete. We had a funny forecast this past week, which included a, a snowstorm activity on Wednesday. So we didn't continue looking at the forecast, we thought this week would be better. We finalized our, our preparation plan for tomorrow and arranged for paving of the last bit of the road for Wednesday and have made those arrangements with the town of Wareham and police detail. And you know, it's a sixty degree forecast and I'm glad we, I'm glad we pushed that week to get to this week. So Tuesday, Wednesday of this week, the paving is complete and the police details are scheduled, scheduled and we're off and running.
Thank you, and, and just at our next meeting, if you could just give us an update on that.
We absolutely will.
Thank you.
Any more board questions? If not, I will open this to the public. Hearing none and seeing none. We have many, we have many people, I'm going to limit public discussion for twenty minutes. So let's be productive and efficient, who's first? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Richard.
I'm sorry.
Do you have the copy of that, that I just gave you of his letter?
Yes, I do.
Can I steal it back? Because I forgot, that's the original.
Can you scan that and send it out?
Yeah.
Oh. This is a- Sir, please.
Sure. I have a prepared statement that I just passed out with some photos, but I also- Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I, my name is Christopher Muller, I've resided at Nineteen Bay Point Drive Extension Town of Wareham since two thousand and twelve. I also want to make, make it known that as a taxpayer, I'm in no way against the careful development of new housing stock in the town of Wareham, including Bay Point. I'm going to just step aside for a second here. On the agreement that was just made to, for Ms. Gleason to meet separately, I think to follow up on what Mr. Schultz said, that if you're going to meet with the developers, you should also make yourself available to homeowners and the abutters for equal time and access to give their opinion on what could be a significant change to our neighborhood. So if it's going to be open to the, to the developers, it should all, that subcommittee should be open.
But it will be, it will be open to the public through this public hearing process.
Well then, I don't see the difference between his meeting with her and our meeting with her, either it's public or it's not. No, I said, I'm just making a statement about it, okay? I think, I think there is, I think you might be, if there's a sunshine clause in the state here, you've just violated it. And I think you want to be very careful about that. Okay, so to finish with what I was saying and also it follows on what Mr. Schultz just said. I also want to remind the board that at the November twenty-second public meeting, I sat here and stated that there were exposed sewer and drain pipes along the entire length of Bay Point Drive, which is the direct access to my home from Onset Avenue. I observed that it was all but impossible to believe that asphalt could be laid with the weather now settling in above, below fifty degrees. Yes.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, did the applicant leave?
Generally, he shows up again, he goes out and talks.
We can't have a public hearing if the applicant is not here.
The applicant's right there.
I can't, okay, thank you, that's why I asked.
Okay, so it is the only access to, to my house is through Bay Point Drive. I observed that it was impossible, these obstructions are dangerous to drivers and had the potential to make it all but impossible to plow the street in a snowstorm. You should recall that Mr. Fay, the developer of the Bay Point Club, broke protocol and joined me here at the table where he exchanged comments with me directly. Publicly stated in front of you and me that the road was contracted to be fully paved by Friday, November twenty-sixth, also known as Black Friday. I said I did not believe it would be done and as we just heard, it was not. Attached to my text are sixteen photos showing what I took at three o'clock this afternoon. As you can see, the roadway is not paved and the sewer heads are still exposed. To me, this is just another example of Mr. Fay's magical imagination where he promises to make things happen and that either he has no intention of, of keeping or he believes we will forget and we won't. I was in the original proposal meeting for the Bay Point Club Home Development in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, I felt Mr. Fay's promises for a new four-lane grand entrance of Onset Ave, including a petition to the state for a stoplight, new fully paved sidewalks from Bay Point Village to Onset Avenue, new high efficiency streetlights to make those sidewalks safe at night, and a new pro shop, public full-service restaurant and renovated events pavilion were all going to increase the quality and of life and the intrinsic value of Bay Point Village. I enthusiastically approved of the plans for phases one and eventually phases two and three. But sadly, like so many of his promises to the Bay Point Village residents and now to the board itself, Mr. Fay has broken another one. I ask at this time that you table all discussion of any plans for phase four development until phases one, two, and three are completed with all the promises that were made to the planning board, the abutters and the new residents are completely kept. They have not been to date, it is now seven years. And, and we, as a matter of fact, if you look at those pictures, you will see no streetlights, you will see incomplete sidewalks. You will see that the road has not been paved as he said it was going to be, even though that promise was absolutely illogical to be kept in the timeframe that he said. The Friday after Thanksgiving was a ridiculous time to say you were going to have a contract done. He has not lived up to his promises to you, to us, to the engineering department, and I think he's making promises that he won't keep now, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next.
Of course.
My name is George Salem. I am the president of Bay Point Village condominiums. I just became aware a few days ago through engineer, engineer Rowley's report that the proposed permit change allowing phase four with fifty-two additional homes is proposing to dump its sewage into our privately owned pump station. There are numerous points I wish to make against this. First, we were not given any notification of this proposal. According to the two thousand fourteen pump station agreement between Bay Point Village and Bay Point Club, Mr. Fay is required to disclose these plans and engineering certifications to us prior to submitting them to the town for purposes of permitting when the proposal will or may cause the capacity of our pump station to be exceeded, will adversely affect service to our condominium and will or may cause our village to incur additional expenses. All three of these conditions definitely apply here. Mr. Fay is building his own pump station for phases two, three, and phase four. And it can be legitimately, phase four can be legitimately fed into those, that new pump station. At this point, he can build his pump station to create whatever capacity he needs to accommodate phases two, three, and four. I believe right now he is only proposing a five-foot diameter holding tank and only using three horsepower pumps. He still has time to modify this pump station. Our system is thirty-four years old. And by the way, Mr. Fay is required to give Bay Point Village notice regarding the specifications of this new pump station. We, I just heard tonight that part of it was starting to be built and we don't even know, we have not gotten anything from him. Finally, and most important, the pump station agreement that allows Mr. Fay to add additional structures to our private pump station does not include the land that the fifty-two units of phase four are built on. This agreement clearly states on pages eighteen, nineteen, and one that it is only applicable to a certain parcel of land that the agreement spells out in maps. Again, let me say that the sewer agreement does not apply to phase four. The Bay Point Club has no legal right to connect phase four to our private sewer system. Mr. Fay is making a profit from these condos. I think it is only natural that since he's making the profit, the sewage should go into his new pump station. Additionally, our village has some extra land and we have the right in the future to build more units and a clubhouse. We will not be able to build these and attach them to our sewer system if it is maxed out. And with fifty-two homes added to our private system, it will be maxed out. Bay Point Village is asking that the planning board require all phase four sewage be handled by Mr. Fay's own pump station. Due to the lack of required notice from Mr. Fay, we are also asking for much more time to consult our lawyers and our engineers before phase four permits are granted. One side note, I thought I heard correctly that part of phase two is going into our pump station. I thought I heard that tonight from Chris, I am not sure. When did?
He just nodded yes.
When, right? Phase two was always going into our pumps.
Chris, can you step up to the microphone, please? Sorry, Bob.
Originally, from the original, there's a, a high point when you first enter into phase two that is always planned was the gravity flow from that, that high point down to go into the phase two and that into the current pump station. And the current pump station, all of the existing flow then gets transferred to our new pump station and there it gets pumped out is what originally and always was the plan.
I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again?
George Salem.
George, thank you.
Who spelled your last name?
S A L E M.
So make, let's get some clarity here. This is the first that I'm hearing that part of this septic and sewer system is privately owned by someone other than Stone Street.
Oh, it's not owned by Stone Street at all? No, that's our sewer system and if I'm understanding it correctly, and I believe I am, that when Windward Pines was planned to go in.
Your definition of Windward Pines is?
Their condominiums. Phase one through three. One, two, three, well now four.
Okay.
Like, so phase one, two, and three, an agreement was made and that-
Between?
Between Bay Point Village and the Bay Point Club. And I, you know, there, we're going to have some other people talk and they might be able to actually have a little more history on this, but the way I understand it is they needed to put their phase one into our pump station. So an agreement was made. Phase two and three was supposed to go into their, their pump station, I believe.
So an agreement was made. Phase two and three was supposed to go into their their pump station. I believe all of it. But you will have another speaker coming up who can address that.
This isn't the time or place.
Okay.
To do that, but I'm not dismissing your your concerns. Don't think that for a second. I don't want to get into a into a debate here. This isn't the proper place to do it. But what you have done is brought up some questions that need to be answered. Chris, I would ask you, do you have a suggestion on the best way to answer these?
Yeah, we'll meet together. Yeah, I'll schedule a meeting. There's nothing I'd like better is there's a lot of things that we need notifications are on that are happening now and that I just realized. So we should have been notified all along, but I'm very happy to start the process.
Mr. Buckland, did you have any comment you care to make about? Right now, the plan is for these two gentlemen to meet off off meeting cycle and and come back and tell us, give us a report.
I think I think that's a good idea because these these two are the are the parties in play on this one. And they're going to be making having to make the agreement between them. That's what occurs on there. So I think that's appropriate that we get that decision done before the planning board makes its.
Oh, absolutely.
Final decision on this.
Mr. Rowley, any comment?
I agree with Mr. Buckland.
Okay, board members, any issue with where we're at here?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm fine. Just to clarify, I just questioned either Mr. Buckland or Mr. Rowley. So, Mr. Campini, I can't didn't say his name right, wouldn't know anything about this. So his report would not have even discussed this.
These pump stations are all privately owned.
Okay.
So whatever negotiations they want to do between them is fine. He has certain requirements for the kind of pumps that he will allow. He wants grinder pumps, no matter where they are. But as far as the the capacity of them and so forth, that's.
And the interconnection, that's all.
Once it gets to Onset Avenue, then it becomes part of the municipal system. But in the meantime, it's privately owned.
So his report wouldn't have addressed any of that.
The only thing it addresses is the total flow which comes out of the Baypoint area.
Starting to get adrift of what's going on here. Okay.
Right.
So there's definitely some disparity on the phase one, two, three, and in the private your privately owned part of the system. So you guys need to talk.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
And then and we want to hear. Don't get me wrong. Please do not think for a minute that that I'm I'm dismissing this. I need to understand. I also need to be very clear in that the planning board has jurisdiction on on subdivisions, on roads, and on the special permit here. We and I've seen the letters. The letters have been distributed that have come from some of your fellow homeowners. And I've had people look at them and try to tell me where this planning board has jurisdiction and where we don't. And right now, I would tell you that this may not be your best resource to address some of the issues that you're talking about. But we 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 are here to to listen and make sure that if there is something we need to do, that we do it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I'm glad I got the opportunity to. I guess you did not know it was our private pump station, not theirs. So I'm I'm glad to have that opportunity.
I'll be honest with you. I assumed it was. It was part of the municipal system, and then that was a bad assumption for me to make.
Okay.
But I know, but it never I'm not making excuses, but I assumed it was, and I was wrong. So.
Mr. Chairman, through you, is there any documentation on agreements that you've made with?
I just handed that right there.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And the specific point that I'm mentioning about the most important is on page 18, 19, and page one.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Are there any other people that want to come and add any color or flavor to this discussion? Is it something that's going to help?
I just want to say what I want to say.
Okay, well.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
While we're waiting for the.
Yep.
I while there are things that we specifically can review inside plan and subdivision, we are enabled to look at the entire impact through the bylaws, and those facts can be taken in consideration for our findings.
I would think.
When we when we itemize our finding in fact.
I just need to say what I.
And who and you are?
I am Joan Guerrero, and I'm at One Jetty Court.
Okay.
Okay. And I've got reservations about the subdivision going forward.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you?
I have reservations.
Right up.
Is that good?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, about the subdivision going forward for all the things that were raised. I'm a homeowner. I've been trying to get some communication between Chris and Mr. Fay to get my kitchen completed. I've lived there seven months. It's not done. I write him emails. I ask him. I beg him, please, can you just do something? So my concern is with all of his resources, he's going to build a whole nother subdivision, and he can't just clean fix my kitchen and build it and complete it. And I'm not the only one that feels this way. There's multiple things that have not been done inside of our condos. So my my hope is remains that Mr. Fay will have my kitchen completed in a timely manner and honor my contract as I paid him in full, and I honored him.
So this is a just a comment. This is a good example of something that this board has no control.
I know. I just needed to say what I.
I hope you feel better.
Chris and Mr. Fay might have heard what I've said, so that when I was buying it.
Address this board, please, ma'am. I mean.
When I was buying the condo, they couldn't have been nicer. As soon as I purchased and paid it in full, he has not honored me by finishing my kitchen. It's a huge disappointment. So you're going to do phase six, and you can't honor me? That's all I have to say.
I have three minutes left. One more speaker. Go ahead, ma'am. This will be the last speaker on on this public hearing.
I'll make it as brief as possible. Discussing the parking space.
You are.
I'm sorry. I'm Deb McGonald, Precinct Two. I live at Baypoint Village. I'm concerned about parking on Baypoint Drive once the condos are built. Baypoint Drive is a private road. The town has little or no jurisdiction over parking issues. If the planning board doesn't ban on-street parking on Baypoint Drive from Onset Avenue all the way around to the current clubhouse and pro shop area, the guests of the residents of phase four will be parking on the street, golfers, tournament attendees, function attendees. We we do not have any recourse if there isn't a restriction by this board on on-street parking. And also asking that you mandate the installation of an appropriate number of no parking either side signage so that people get the message.
I hear you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. What was your name again? Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, that's that was my last one tonight. I got to move on. I would. Yeah, thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion to. I can't. I've checked. I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to January 10, at which point we will hear a report from our subcommittee of Ms. Gleason. We will hear from Mr. Rowley and the applicant as to where we are in reviewing the outstanding issues.
I'll move.
I have a.
Before you vote, could I just?
Yes.
Make a recommendation to you.
Of course.
With respect to what you have heard tonight in terms of parking and so forth. Would you take out this phase one sheet, which is dated almost a year ago now? And just look it over. This has this is not exactly the same plan that you have there. But for your benefit, it does show not only a reconfiguration of these units, I think, to a much better effect, but it also shows two parking areas which will by this project will be eliminated for use by the pavilion. And I had posted the question to Chris the other day when we were walking the site as to what was going to happen if you had a convention or something like that, or a party or something at the pavilion, and these parking area which is there today, which is the site of this project, is all of a sudden gone. Where do they go? This little plan shows that there are two proposed. So I just encourage the board to take a look at it as an option to what is shown there. I think there may be some positive things that come out of that.
Thank you, Charlie.
It's a January of 2021 sketch that it might have been shown to the board months ago. I don't know. But I find it an improvement over what we see here.
Okay, I had a motion from Mr. Corbett to continue the hearing to the 10th of January. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. King. Mr. Corbett.
Hi.
Mr. Scholes.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. Swenson, voteside 500. Chris, will you sign this continuation form for me, please? Right there. Thanks. Okay. We're going to open some new public hearings now. This is 37-21, a definitive subdivision plan on Tobia Way. Applicant Christian Tobia. Am I saying that correctly? Tobia, thank you. Map 40 lots, 1,002, 1,020, 1,021, 1,022, a two lot subdivision. Sure, yeah, I'll be happy to take them. I'm sorry, I've got a pile right here. I'll put them in, okay? Go ahead and hand them out. Oh, okay, that's fine. Good boy. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, Aaron. Thank you. I need to read the. This one is, where is this? Oh, this this is the one behind the house that had the fire, right? This is the one behind the house that had the fire down on Great Neck and Crooked River.
Top of Crooked River, yes.
Okay. Not sure the right order, but this is I'm going to read the notice of a public hearing. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 13, 2021, at 6:00 PM in room 320, the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 37-21 for a definitive subdivision plan of land of Tobia Way under the requirements of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81L to Christian E. Tobia, Care of J C Engineering, Inc. of 2854 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. 22571, proposing a two lot subdivision located at 5 Crooked River Road and 0 Crooked River Road, Wareham, Mass. Assessment map, 40 lots, 1,002, 1,020, 1,021, and 1,022 in the R30 zoning district. This was first published on November 25, second published on December 2. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing on project 3721. I have a motion by Mr. King and a second by Mr. Corbett. Mr. Corbett.
Hi.
Mr. Sho.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. King. And Mr. Swenson, voteside 500. The public hearing is now open. With that, please introduce yourselves and why don't you give us an overview of what we're what we're talking about?
For the record, Sam, I am Ellie with J C Engineering. Here we have four existing lots, all under the same ownership. These lots were actually created and approved from a previous subdivision plan back in 1974, I believe it was. However, the roadway was never constructed. So we're here in front of you today to with essentially a subdivision modification plan where we'll be revising the lot lines and updating the design. Currently, there's one existing home within these lots. It's address number five on Crooked River Road. With our proposed lot lines, this lot will now be a conforming lot in front on Crooked River Road. In addition to that, we'll be creating a 40-foot wide layout with an adequate area for turning. And then one conforming lot in the back, which will access off of our proposed road. We're calling this a two lot subdivision, but the road will essentially only be accessed by the lot in the back. So this will essentially be an extended driveway. We are still waiting for comments back from the review engineer. So we look to address those comments once received, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you want to add to that at all.
You need to move the microphone up a little bit. Who does?
Kyle does.
I look help me out. I just want to make sure. I I drove by this the other day, and I wanted to. I want to make sure I know exactly where it is. Looking on the front page, the locust map, the the house to the right on the corner of Great Neck and Crooked River. That's the one that's got the they had the fire. They had to get the goat up on the roof of the shed, right? That's correct. Is someone that lives there here tonight? No, okay. And and you said that these these lots are already in already done from a layout perspective.
Right, right. There was a previous subdivision plan, 1974, I believe it was dated, that was approved, which created these four lots. You can see on page two. That's how they currently exist today. And then page three shows what we intend to do with the lot lines.
So I assume I assume the the next step is for our consulting town engineer to review these plans. Have you have you done a cost estimate at this point, Mr. Rowley? I'm trying to figure out where you're at.
That's been submitted. I'm just waiting for authorization.
Okay, so we have the cost estimate is in. You've had obviously had an opportunity to look, take a cursory look at this. Do you have the data that you need?
Yes.
It's my opinion, in my opinion alone, that the technical details that Mr. Rowley wants to examine and report back to this board are the first step for this board. We will talk tonight if there's any higher level issues or any that anyone has, and I think that's probably where we want to go right now. Mr. King, is there anything popping into your mind that you'd like to discuss right now?
I'm looking at Google Maps from above, and I see this this quite a quite a lot of open, undisturbed space behind the house where they're proposing to put this second lot in this road that's technically technically going to be a driveway. There's there's no future plans to hook a left and access any of this other open space and make that driveway a road.
No, just going to service the lot in the back.
Absolutely not.
Charlie, is that something that we can write in should the time come?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was
Are you checking your stocks?
I was looking, I was looking at the, I was looking at the map. What was your, what was your question? I'm sorry.
So I asked if that so-called driveway was ever going to be used to access the rest of this open space in the back as another lot becomes available, should it become available? And he said, no, no plans, but is that something that we can write in? That, that that driveway is, remains a driveway?
I don't, I don't know. Is that something that we can do? Can we put restrictions on that?
You can put the restrictions on a number of lots that the, the road accepts.
Yep.
Um, I think you might want to also, though, consider the idea of efficient, more efficient use of the land. And if there was a development opportunity in the rear, then maybe you want access to that.
You could undo that, though, right?
You could.
So if we put a provision in and said that that driveway serviced that one lot only, and then an opportunity came down the road two years from now, we could undo that.
Right, you just want to have the road reconstructed in a different way.
Okay. You just, you know, from sitting on the, the board for the few short years that I've been here, that things change. And they change a lot. So I'm starting to learn that it's, it's better to ask the question now than to wait two years from now and have somebody come back and say, we got a nice driveway here, it's plenty wide enough, we're going to put another house back there. That was, I was just curious.
Can I just say something?
Please.
Yeah, I'm Christian Tobiah, I'm the property owner. The, the property, I think the lot you're talking about behind is owned by the town of Wareham.
Yep.
The cemetery, the town bought it for cemetery, and I was at a cemetery meeting a couple of years ago. And David Menard, I'm sorry.
The Eggoam Cemetery?
Correct. And David Menard said that at the plan back there, behind, directly that those lots is going to be more cemetery. That's the plan, from what he told me. And my plan is, is that back, I was, you know, my plan is to put a fence, so there's definitely that's my plan is to put a fence, so there won't be no throughway. It's going to go, the driveway is only going to go to the house that I want to build back there.
All right, from my perspective, nothing's popping out at me right now. I'm anxious to forward and, and see what our consultant town engineer has to say. As you've probably heard, this will be the, the purview of this board is around the, around the road, around the stormwater management of saying the, the guarantee that the work will be done correctly through a bond cert or covenant or something like that. I'm not seeing any real significant issues popping out at me, so I think that for me, the next thing to do is move forward with Mr. Raleigh's analysis. Mr. Shoals?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Shaheen. Have we done all the pre-application checklists? Have all the butters been notified? Have all the other boards been notified? All of those checklist items?
Uh, yeah, if this, if that hadn't been done, this project wouldn't be right now. All that stuff, the pre-application, make sure it's complete, it's already been done and certified and all that. Like I said, we don't we have to wait until the application is complete before it's stamped by the town clerk and then to you guys, so all that stuff has been done already.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Buckland. Following up on Mr. King's question, I understand the applicant isn't, isn't planning to do anything in the future, and I still need to study the, the plot plan, but if they did decide to develop further, presuming that they can, would they have to file another subdivision plan?
Uh, yes, they would. They'd have to extend the road to the, to the adjoining property.
So in addition to whatever restrictions we may decide to put on the road now, they would still have to come back with another subdivision plan if they were going to extend it.
If they were going to extend it for development, if it's just for access, it's, it's, could, there could be a driveway that would be, that would be put through there as well.
So they wouldn't have to do another subdivision plan for that?
Not, not for a driveway, no.
So we need to make sure that whatever restrictions we want to note, get, get noted. Those, I need to study more, but I agree, it looks kind of straightforward.
Mr. Corbett. Ms., Ms. Gleason, any comments or questions? Mr. Baptiste. Mr. King.
No, no further questions.
Okay. Anything else from, from you guys before we can move on to public comment? Okay. Of course, Charlie, thank you.
Just one comment with respect to what Mr. Schultz had asked about. Sorry. Just one comment with respect to what you were asking about, Mr. Schultz, and that would be if the property that was adjacent to what Mr. Tobiah wants to do is not a part of the development. And if the layout stops at the boundary of the, of that other parcel, and it's not a part of it, they would not have any rights in it. And it would be something that Mr. Tobiah would have to grant in order to make a second driveway. So is it possible? Yes, but not without other provisions, including what Mr. Buckland has told you.
Okay. I will take public comment now. I will limit it to 20 minutes. We will continue this hearing till the 10th of January after, after public, so if you, anyone here to speak? Please come up, identify yourself. Yep, because you, you don't, if he has questions, they'll go through me and you have the option to answer if you want or not answer. It'll be up to you.
Sure. My name is Tim Raymond. I live at 8 Crooked River Road, across the street from the proposal. All in favor of it? I've been there for 20 years plus, and I see no issues. It would keep the Tobiah family that's been on that road for generations in the area and being able to expand his family.
Well, that's unusual for us. Well, I appreciate very much you saying that. I'm sure the applicant does too. Thank you.
No problem.
Very much. Anyone else tonight? Okay. Mr. Raleigh, will January 10th work for you? I would entertain a motion to continue public hearing number 3721 for Tobiah Way to January 10th.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Corbett, a second from Mr. King. Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Shoals.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste. Mr. King.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye, 5-0-0. I'll need you to sign this for me, okay? Right there, please. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, I need the public announcement for 69 Great Neck Road, Aaron, 3821.
Richard, before you get started on that, can I just
Yes, we're going to take a recess for three, four minutes here, okay? Okay, we're calling the Wareham Planning Board meeting of 12, 13, 21 back to order. Going to read a notice of a public hearing. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM in room 320, the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 3821 for a definitive subdivision plan of land under the requirements of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81T, to David Andrade, Care of Field Engineering Company, Inc. of 11D Industrial Drive Metapoynt, Mass. 02739, proposing a six lot subdivision located at 69 Great Neck Road, Wareham, Mass. Assessor's map 41, lot 1019 in the R30 zoning district. First notice was done on November 25th, second on December 2nd. I will entertain a motion to open public hearing for project 3821 at 69 Great Neck Road. So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Shoals and a second by Mr. Corbett to open the public hearing. Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Shoals.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste. Mr. King. And Mr. Swenson votes aye, it's 5-0-0. And you are the applicant, sir? You are in your name?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Ken Morrissey, project manager with Field Engineering, representing Dave Andrade on this matter.
Can you explain to us what this project's all about?
Absolutely. What I'd, what I'd like to do is just give a brief overview at this point. I know this is the first, you know, the, the first public hearing. We fully expect a continuation. We did receive, we did receive comments from, from Charlie. And we've, we've got a little bit of homework to do between addressing the technical details regarding the drainage and, and addressing his comments and as well as touching base with Dave Menard on some of the, you know, also some of the drainage issues. So the, the site is of, it's a 5.9 acre site located on the Naughtley side of Great Neck Road. We're proposing a six lot subdivision with approximately 550 linear feet of roadway, fully serviced by cable utilities, electric, electric cable, telephone, gas, and on-site stormwater management systems and an extension of the, of the municipal water system. Sewer disposal systems will be all, will all be individual on sites on, on the lots. One of the, I'm just going to shift gears to, to one of the key points on Charlie's letter regarding the, the lot circle requirements and the shape factor requirements. And if I may, I have additional information I'd like to, I'd like to present on, on that matter.
Okay. While you're doing that, Charlie, refresh me on this. You've you've known of this project for some time?
I did.
And timeline, where are we on here? I'm, I'm
You, you have a report. You should have my report on it.
I don't know that I have it with me.
It, it was finished up last week.
Yeah. Oh, I do have it.
Mr. Chairman, through you back to Mr. Raleigh. You've been working with the Conservation Commission on this project?
No, I haven't touched base with them at all.
Oh, you, there is an OI going on, right?
We have filed with the Conservation Commission. We've continued the initial public hearing with them. They're, they're in a holding patent, obviously, until Charlie and I work out the details regarding the drainage.
The Conservation Commission receives Charlie's comments to the planning board, so they get that information.
Okay, I, I knew they were waiting to hear from Charlie. I, I've listened in on some of the hearings.
Okay, I did copy them.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The same, these are the same?
Yep, they're all the same. Okay.
So what you have there is a, it, it's amended request for waivers letter. The initial letter, we were asking for a waiver not to require the preparation of a street, of a street light in, in a tree plant. Based on Charlie's comments regarding the shape factor circles, we've added that waiver with a, quite a lengthy explanation, and I know, I, I know it's a lot, it's a lot of reading material and it's getting late here, so I'm I'm not expecting a decision to be made on, on this at this point, but I'm just, I, I will just simply touch base on the, you know, some of the items that we had, in your, in your package, there's a plan that has the current subdivision. And then there's on the side, there's the, there's the amended subdivision where we've just done some minor tweaking on the side lot lines in order to fit the 150-foot radius circle. One of what we are asking for is on lot one, the largest circle that we're able to fit on lot one is 140 feet, so we're asking for a reduction in the radius from the, from the required 100 feet to 140 feet on the basis of the conditions, the conditions around that lot. The, the existing driveway that went to, that went to the existing house that's on there, it's actually kind of, it, it comes to a common driveway point when it comes into Great Neck Road at the south, at the southwestly corner. So did this and the required 30-foot property line radius is kind of like what, what fixed the location of the road in this area here? What we're trying to avoid, obviously, is, is maintaining the vegetated buffer here to the adjacent property. I believe it's 60, 67 Great Neck Road. When we're looking at the roadway alignment here, I mean, that's pretty much, I mean, it's fixed, so we can't, there, there's really no opportunity to, you know, to move the road around without sacrificing some of the vegetated buffer that's along that property. And we'd also note that the, within that 140-foot radius, that there is no, there, there are no wetlands on that lot one. A portion of it is within the, the 100-year flood zone. But there's no portion of the, of the buildable portion of that, of that 140-foot radius is outside of the is outside of the, the flood zone. So again, those are pretty much the highlights that, that we've noted in that, in that letter to, again, to support the waiver. At this point, just like to field any questions or comments or concerns that the board may have, so we can take it under advisement.
So I understand the first one, the street light and tree plan. I understand number one, under shape factor for lot one to reduce from 140 to 150. Can you walk me through again, number two, the location of the proposed subdivision roadway has been established by the location of the existing shared driveway entrance to 71 Great Neck Road?
Yeah, 71 Great Neck Road is here.
Yes.
And when we, when we do the subdivision, the, you know, we're going to discontinue, this is a common driveway, so it would, it would serve as a single access to 71. You see, if you look on the plan, you, you kind of see how, how they come together at the, at the intersection of Great Neck Road. So that goes away, because lot one is going to be accessed by the subdivision.
The driveway now, I've driven, I drove up there the other day.
Yeah.
That's going away.
Yeah.
Right, totally gone.
It's gone away, yeah.
And all that will be left is the left part going to 71.
That's going to serve as a single access to, to lot 71. Then, starting from that point, we just, all we do, we just maximize our horizontal separation between the, between where the common driveway was and where the, where, where the new road is going to be. However, we can't, we, we still have to maintain the 30-foot radius rounding on the Radius rounding on the, um, at, at the intersection. And also with that, we're trying to maintain. The existing vegetated buffer to sixty seven Great Neck Road. Which their house, according to the mapping, is plus or minus. It's, it's only, it's only twenty five feet off the property line. So again, we're just trying to minimize the impacts to, to, to both of those adjacent lots.
Um, looking at Google Maps. It looks like there's a house right in the middle of this. Is it?
There is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There, yeah, there's, uh, that, that was, that was the botless house.
So that's kind of.
Yeah, yeah, that's going, yeah, 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 because our road's, our road's going right through it. There's also a garage and, uh, and a small, and another small shed. So she called it a she shed when I, when I talked to her.
Is, is, is there someone living there now?
No.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
If, 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 if there is.
Yeah.
Without, without any knowledge of the owner.
It's pretty tough.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question for the applicant.
Sure.
Did you submit a preliminary plan or just definitive?
A what?
A preliminary subdivision plan?
No, we didn't.
So you went straight to definitive?
Straight, uh, straight definitive, yeah. So you have a long, you have a longer, um, window to.
So, um.
Are you opening support company?
Yeah, I think, I just wanted to do a, do a, a timeline check here. Uh, we do have Mr. Rowley's report on this. Um, we do, this is an updated plan. I think the board needs some time. To reflect on that. Uh, so, given that, let's, uh, open it up to board questions and then we'll open it to public questions, okay? Mr. Corbett, any questions at this time? Mr. Schultz.
Uh, could you just point on the map where the wetland areas are on this property?
There aren't any. It's, uh, there's, the closest border vegetated wetland is across the street. There are no wetlands on this property.
Okay.
Aside from, there, there, there's, a portion of it. Is within the coastal flood zone.
Flood, okay, I understand that too.
Yeah, that's right up front here.
Okay, and then the other question, um. The drainage flow, which I'm expecting to see from Charlie's report though, runs down the road into Onset Avenue. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, there, there's, there's an extensive offsite area that also drains towards here. You chase it, you can chase it all the way, all the way up the hill here. Everything kind of funnels down. The flow, the flow path to, there's two existing catch basins. That's on great, that's on, you're great neck road.
So.
As, where, what's there now is a small, shallow depression. Which pawns, you know, which. Collects water there and then ultimately it does spill over in, in, into the catch basin. It's based on our modeling and, and.
Okay, so one of the things that I, I want to understand as we go through this evolving project. Is how that flow is going to work, how it's going to be exacerbated by putting that paved service in, service in. Surface, I can say that word. Surface and, and how that's going to impact, uh. Great Neck Road and the properties on the other side of Great Neck Road. So as we go, I don't, you don't have to answer that today, but that's.
And that was reflected in, in, in Charlie's, in, in Charlie's report. And like I said, we have, we have our own homework to do and we'll work out the final details, but ju- just explain the proposed system. It's split up into two, it's split up into two catching areas. The upper portion here, from the cul-de-sac to about midpoint in the road. Is, is, there's two catch basins. It goes through, um, it, it goes through like an oil water separator manhole here and then. It's a series of leaching pits with an overflow pipe that eventually, that everything wants to flow down to this low corner right here. The low spot is right in front of the lot there. It all flows from the leaching pits into this infiltration basin here. And then the infiltration basin, it's, it's, it's sized to retain and infiltrate like the twenty five year storm. Charlie had asked us to look at, you know, to look at the hundred year storm event, to see what happened.
So again, thank you for that. I, you don't have to answer it today, but that's.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's something I looked at from Charlie's report and wanted to understand.
Yeah. But because it's also discharging into the, you know, into the municipal collection system, um, I, I like to get a consensus from Dave Menard as well, so.
Great. That's, that's all I had to do.
Okay, um, Ms. Pleason. I'm sorry, Mr. Baptiste. Mr. King.
Um. The first lot on the right, Lot six. Um, does that? Fall under the definition of gerrymandering a lot in order to gain frontage? That's a really strange looking lot.
So my only, to go off that point you just made, that. For the lot that he's talking about, Lot one on the right, that narrow path that goes down, is that distance? I have to look at the scale and that and measure out, but that's that distance greater than thirty feet between, like down that narrow ship all the way?
It's, it's thirty, i- i- it is less than thirty feet. We've not included that area in the, in the updated plan.
So you didn't include me? Okay.
We, yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we, we deducted that area from, uh, and, and there's, there's actually a small area here up on, uh, up on Lot four two where the road, uh, what works, the, the road is closer than. The thirty feet to the property line. So on the, on the updated plan that, that we, we, we have there, we've excluded those areas.
Okay.
Mr. Rowley, any comments or questions at this point?
No, I, I think that Mr. Maude has covered it pretty well. Um, those were my main points. The first system that he's talking about in terms of drainage, um, I looked at it. It, it appears in the calculations that he has taken into consideration the roofs of the. Uh, proposed dwellings as well as the paved road surface. Uh, to come down into those drainage areas. So we're not looking at, uh, having to restrict that to just the road drainage. I think he's covered that. Uh, my concern was what happens at Great Neck Road because the drainage little, it's a natural area right now. But he's going to utilize it as the catchment area for the overflow from the upper one. Plus the natural flow, plus the additional flow from the lower portion of the development. And then it spills over that and goes into the road layout for Great Neck Road and then dumps into those two catch basins that are there. That could be a safety issue, especially during the winter time. But it also could be a concern with backing up those basins if they're not capacity. Uh, if the capacity of those basins are not sufficient. I, I don't know what the status of those basins are, whether they're all leaching basins. Whether they have an outlet pipe to the marsh across the street, I don't know. So Mr. Maude is doing the right thing by, uh, talking with Dave Menard to see what his concerns would be.
Good. Um, I've been through, Mr. Buckland, any comments or questions?
I just said I'd want you to consider the aesthetics of a detention basin on the, on the street frontage. And if it gets, has to get larger to accommodate additional flows. Um, does it have, uh, does it have a requirement for fencing around it as well too? And, uh. It takes on a strange, uh, entrance to the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we took a good hard look at that and, un- un- unfortunately, that's where the topography. You know, that, that, that's where the basin wants to be. We're certainly, uh, you know, w- we want, we want the front door to look nice there. Um, and we certainly plant, you know, we're going to plant some screen veg, screening vegetation around, uh, uh, around that basin. Just to soften, soften the view of it. Absolutely, yeah.
It's only two feet deep.
Yeah, I think it's very shallow, isn't it, Ken? Yeah, yeah.
It's only a couple of feet deep, but it's fairly.
It's only like three feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Sure, just to follow. That, that detention basin is not on somebody's property, right?
No, it's on, it's all totally on our property.
Right, so who will maintain that after the subdivision is developed?
Well, it'll be the responsibility of the developer and I'm not sure what the town's policy is once you get to road acceptance.
So, who, Mr. Buckland or Mr. Rowley, through you, Mr. Chairman, who, who would be held accountable for managing that detention basin?
The homeowners and you'd want a homeowner's agreement and, um, uh, a maintenance requirement to, uh, maintain that system because the town's not going to take over that system.
So that's something we have to remember to do then.
Yeah. So the town will accept the roadway but not the, but, 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 but not the drainage system?
That's possible. They may not even accept the roadway.
I mean, time, just subject to town meeting, are you, yeah, okay.
All right.
Any other comments, questions before I go to the public? Okay, uh, this, we'll now go into public hearing and those of you that want to talk are guidelines for three minutes. Um, try not to repeat what previous people have told us. We're looking for any and all information. Who'd like to go first? You?
Hi, so I'm Joyce Holster and I live at sixty one Great Neck Road. And I'd like to point out that the land directly across from the waste basin. Is the salt marsh for Onset Beach, which is at the back end of Buzzards Bay. That's where all the water goes. This is an over five acre property. Which requires a national pollution discharge elimination system, stormwater permit. Under Section four oh two, C W A. And further regulations go along with that. It so happens that when I bought my house. The plans for Cranberry Lane came along with it. Cranberry Lane has a similar basin. That's at the bottom of the front yard of the house to my left.
I'm sorry, I don't know where Cranberry Lane is.
It's three houses down from this. There's me.
She's here.
And then that next house is on Cranberry Lane. Cranberry Lane goes up. In a similar fashion to this development, ending at a bog. And I am not aware that anyone. Has plans to maintain that basin. If that road is accepted. That is for the town to maintain. And that, I imagine, is what will happen. Because you won't have homeowners looking to do something together with each other for that kind of a basin. I'd like to point out that there are surfaces that make semi-permeable roads that make water absorption into the land a lot easier. To take all of the water that flows, I, oh, pardon me, I should point out that on the map. At the very far end. Of the lot, if you go another twelve hundred feet of woodland. You get to the new Minot Forest Elementary School. So that is a huge area. In that one little, probably about ten acre area where trees have been clear cut. And no drainage has been put into that forest from the school. Drainage from the school goes forward to Minot. What happens to the back? It all comes down Great Neck Road. I don't flood. But I'm very concerned. I hear that that, what did you call that little basin that holds all the, in the Lot one? What did you call that little basin that's three feet deep?
It's an infiltrate, infiltration basin.
Okay, how wide is that? How many across, you know, dimensions? Is that going to be like a big square hole with grass around it?
No, it's only about forty feet.
Forty feet?
Yeah.
That's a large area. Do you guys know the flat roofed house on Great Neck Road? That's the house right next to this lot. And directly across the street is where the salt marsh floods. This week alone. That salt marsh has been full of water three times. I've only lived in, in, in Wareham for about fourteen years. I have never seen three times a full basin of water there. We are talking about hundred year floods. But if you, if you do Google Earth and you look at this area of Great Neck Road. In thirty years, this area is not going to exist. You guys are not doing enough for our town. When you consider a, a little subdivision and another little subdivision on Crooked River. That's a half a mile down from this one. And then the school, everything. Is getting destroyed. Sand does not compact, by the way, from an earlier thing here. No sand compacts to make the road so that the water won't flow. That's what the other guy said. Sorry, I'm off point. I'm also concerned about all of the coyotes, fisher cats and turkeys that. Abound in that area. I don't like them. I don't feed them. I don't care about them, but I don't want to see them running through my yard. Because this huge area is clear cut. The road on Cranberry Lane is not wide enough. Do you happen, oh, I have to, sorry. I would like to know if that road is going to be wider than Cranberry Lane. I suspect the engineer is aware of that because I believe he did the. Engineering for Cranberry Lane also.
I didn't know.
Your company did, didn't it?
No.
That's correct.
Maybe he built it, but I didn't.
I got the plan.
Excuse me, excuse me, uh, from now on, all questions to me.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, so that road is not wide enough for two car. You cannot have a road going.
Now we are off track.
And down it.
Now we are off track.
This is what I want to know. Are there going to be, is this road going to be wide enough? For a car going up and a car adjacently coming down?
Okay.
Because other roads in that area are not. And this little catch basin is so out of context as what the neighborhood looks like. It's going to be really awful. Um, you guys do roads. I certainly hope that native plants get filled in instead of. Other things. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't destroy our town.
By me, Mr. Chairman?
You have a comment, you're.
Yeah, yeah, the, the road we're proposing here is twenty two feet wide, back of burn to back of burn with twenty foot wide. Two ten foot wide travel lanes.
Anyone else for a comment tonight?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Christine Michaud. I live at eight Cranberry Lane. And I would just like to request. That the aesthetics of the neighborhood, if considered. Would coincide with all of the beautiful wooded lots in the area. And that the developer would not go in and just rape the land of all the trees. Uh, I purchased my home in two thousand fourteen. After a very long search for privacy. I live on the bog. My sunroom is only feet from the bog. And I will be looking out my window at this development. And I will lose my privacy. I would also like to request that wooded, uh, area be left at the back of Lots four, five and six. So that I don't have to see those homes. Or any of that subdivision. I am also greatly concerned about the wildlife that exists. I live on the bog. I'm out my window every single day. I have pictures of deer over the winter, twenty at a time in the bog, frolicking, playing. And just socializing. I'm greatly concerned. That, uh, the removal of all of the natural state of the land would affect the wildlife. The turkeys reside on that lot that, the lot has been. A mess for many years. And, uh, also, um, the eastern box turtle lays eggs in the sand piles around the bog every year. I would like to take, uh, I would like to be. Have it noted that, that is an endangered species. And that the wildlife should be considered in this plan. As well as privacy on the lots and a lot of wooded area left. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Nelson and I live at.
Sorry, your name is?
Susan Nelson.
Thank you.
I live at sixty three Great Neck Road. Lot six abuts my home. Um, my front door is going to be. Over viewing Lot six. And my question today is, uh, again, with the vegetation. Um, I don't know. You know, there's a stone wall that divides the property there. And I was kind of hoping we could still keep that woodsy view over there. Um, I too am concerned about the animals that live there because after all, they were there before us all. And she's right about the turtles, the deer, the turkey, there's owls. And that's all I wanted to know about that or say about that. But also, if, obviously, this is something that's gonna come along. And so I'm concerned about the hours of operation of noise when trucks come in. We had a few houses, a few houses down during the summer and they had deliveries at five-thirty in the morning. You could hear those trucks. I mean, granted, nobody was working there, but there was trucks there waking people up. So those are just my concerns. I'm just kind of hoping that that house, my front door, will look, overlook lot six. And I want to keep that view. I did not buy that house at the time with anything but a wood view and a nice stone wall. And that's it. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you had that's all right, we'll, there'll be other opportunities. Anyone else tonight? Seeing none. I will, we'll continue to the tenth, but this board has Charlie's report. We need to study that, compare that against a new plan and be prepared at next meeting to get close to having all of our questions answered and any new ones. We should be getting down to a short list. So with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing on definitive subdivision plan thirty-eight twenty-one to January tenth. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, a second by Mr. King. Mr. Corbett. Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste. Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. This is moved forward. Thank you. I need the public announcement for the last project, Aaron. And I I need my applicant to sign the continuation request. Aaron, did we get a report from you on this last project? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you did.
The previous one that's why I the one we're about to do, you said. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Oh, two, five, seven, one to consider petition thirty-nine, twenty-one for site plan review under the requirements of Article fifteen, section two, six, section fifteen, twenty of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Warren Q O B Z LLC Care of G A F Engineering, Inc. of two sixty-six Main Street. Wareham, Mass. Oh, two, five, seven, one, proposing construction of a sixty-five hundred square foot restaurant with a deck and a twenty-six by sixty open pavilion, a fifteen hundred square foot commercial retail space, and attendant site utilities, parking facility, pedestrian and vehicular construction and site landscaping located at fifty-nine Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Successors map forty-seven, lot one, one, two, four, one, one, two, five, one, one, two, six, and the W V dash one zoning district, first notice on November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, second on December sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Yeah, I'm saying again. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing on thirty-nine, twenty-one, fifty-nine Main Street. So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, a second by Mr. Corbett, Mr. King. A vote. Mr. Baptiste. Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes five, zero, zero. The public hearing is now open. How are we doing?
We're doing all right. How about you guys? Continue. We'll adjourn within approval.
This is going to be an interesting project. It's gonna have a lot of discussion around it. We've got about thirty minutes of recording time left. So I'd like to go quickly.
I'll be brief and as brief as I can and go as quickly as I can. I have some other boards with me, but in any event, I'm here, I'm Bill Madden at G A from G A F here in behalf of Warren Q O Z B LLC. And the proposal that they have before the town, we've submitted a plan for site plan review. The triggering factor was the need to have at least ten parking spaces for any one of the uses that are on the site. The project site is the old Greer lumber site that I think most people are familiar with in town. It's, it's, it's basically a redevelopment site at this point. There's no buildings on the site. There's no topsoil. There's there's not really much of any thing of any value out there other than the bulkhead that's, that holds the land back from the Wareham River. So it's in the Wareham Village One zoning district. These uses that are proposed with the restaurant, the the pavilion and the small retail shop, those are all allowed uses within the Wareham Village One zoning district. So we're not seeking any special permits or anything along those lines for the proposal that we have before you right now. On our plan, we have the zoning data on the front sheet, the zoning data table that identifies the lot size, the frontage and what have you and whatnot. It's about a acre and a half piece of land is what we're operating with here in that Wareham, in that, in that zoning district. The impervious surface requirement in the zoning bylaw is seventy percent. We're at sixty-four. We're pretty well close to maxed out on the site. As far as building coverage goes, thirty percent building coverage is allowed in the zoning district, and we're just at a little over twenty at this point. So as far as the parameters go for lot coverage and building coverage and things of that nature, we fall within the parameters that are set forth in the zoning bylaw. I'll just rip through the plans. First, the first sheet is the overview sheet with the zoning data. They talked about a locust map in an aerial in an aerial image as well. The second sheet is our general notes and things of that nature, general notes, legend. So if anybody was interested in knowing an abbreviation, that that would be found on that particular sheet. The third sheet is what we call the existing conditions sheet. We call it existing conditions and demolition. Essentially, that just shows what the topography is on the site. It's relatively relatively flat, but we have an elevated landform on that. I guess I'm gonna call it the southerly portion of the site. It's about six feet higher than the land from over toward, over toward Bessie Park. So we're trying to take advantage of that with our building siding on that site. It's all in the A E sixteen flood zone. So that means that we have to have our first floor, our operating floor, elevation seventeen. It's a base flood elevation plus one for the design flood elevation. So everything that we talk about, when we talk about elevation seventeen, we're talking about the main floor of the building. They're able to have space below that main floor that can be used for storage, can't be used for anything. Not living, not anything more than storage. So you'll see on some of these plans as we go forward that we showed that the lower level is at elevation eight. When the structural engineer designs his foundation plan, he'll design it with flood vents coming in and going out. So we're gonna have flood vents on the higher side of the building here to come in, and on the lower side, they'll be, they'll be at the lower side of the building. So we have some ability to route the any coastal storm event through that site. But in any, in any case, this shows the existing conditions, the way they are. There's a bulkhead that we show at the, at the water's edge. There's also an existing sidewalk that basically traverses across at the water's edge and it continues down into Bessie Park. There's a small gap over there to the north. But for all intents and purposes, there is a sidewalk that runs, runs at the water's edge. There's also a sidewalk on the west side of Main Street. There's a sidewalk that ends right up here on the, on the north end of Bessie Park. But if you see where that property line is on, on the drawings, you know, there's, there's something screwy going on with the layout and the public utilities, sidewalk, roadway, and things of that nature that actually fall onto the lot. So as we head to the south, we'll see that there's actually a catch basin, the portion of the traveled way of Main Street is, is actually on the lot. Didn't really create too many problems for us because you wanted to take advantage, I mean, leave the street where it is, leave everything where it is, apply the landscaping requirements of the bylaw to the site and properly landscape the perimeter of the, of the property. So that's a quick overview of what exists there. What we're looking to do in the third sheet is just basically our layout. And I just need to point out that when this meeting was scheduled, we one of the consultants that's working with us came down with COVID, so there was a little bit of coordination issue between his work and our work. So there's a couple of things that don't really affect the site layout or things that are associated with site plan review, but, but do affect the plan. And one that I'll just point out, I'll show you on another image. But we were once anticipating this small stick-built portion of the site to be built on the south end of the property. That's no longer part of, part of the plan. Right now, that's intended to be basically the service entrance into the kitchen at the, at the rear of the property. But I just wanted to point out that we ran into that situation with COVID in the coordination between our structural guy in the Vermont Timber Frame Company in our office kind of didn't get together the way we customarily see it due, due to that. And we understand, it will be corrected, and we understand that the process will continue on. But essentially, what we have is a sixty-five hundred square foot restaurant. It's roughly sixty-five feet wide, hundred feet long. There's a deck that's roughly twenty-five feet by sixty-five feet that would be on the, the north end of that building. We show a parking field for, for the restaurant. Where it is, well, we have it designed at a hundred and fifty seats that requires one seat per, one parking space per five, five seats. So we essentially have a hundred and fifty parking hundred and fifty seats, fifty or so, thirty or so parking space. I need to read the I need to read the table to be accurate on it. But anyway, I think it's like thirty for the, thirty for the restaurant. There's a pavilion that's just the rectangular building that's shown there, and that's a pavilion that would would be used by the patrons of the restaurant, by the people that perhaps work in the small commercial building, people that frequent the marina, or anybody that would say drive to Bessie Park, park over there. It's basically an open space element for the patrons and employees of the, of the facility. So consequently, we did not consider parking associated with that because there's no facilities there, there's no bathroom, there's no kitchen, there's, there's nothing other than a covered pavilion, which you're probably all familiar with. Small twelve hundred square foot building at the northerly end of the site, supposed to be could be a small retail, could be a small ice cream shop. That's one thing that is being considered. But twelve hundred square feet, small patio in the front. So we have, I think, four spaces designated for that. We have this marina or slip space that we have out there. There's, there were twenty-four shown there. We carry one-half space per slip. That's what's required by zoning. There's twelve spaces there. Thirty that are required by the restaurant, four that are required by this building for a total of forty-six. And that's what we, that's what we provided, forty-six parking spaces on the site, three of which are handicap accessible. What we tried to do is cite our handicap accessible spaces by the front door of the building, at least two of them. So we sort of set that, we didn't sort it, we did set it up so they had handicap parking on the front to give them access in, into the, into the building. This might give you a better idea of what the front of the building would look like with the handicap accessible ramp. It has to be a switchback ramp because of the length and the elevation that we have to attain at the floor level. So we show our handicap ramp going into a small covered area at the front of the building, the stairs that would go up on the, on the north end into the, into the main entrance of the building. And then there's a series of stairs that would come up underneath the, underneath the deck, which, which would come up from here to go into the bar side of the restaurant. So that's what, that's what we, we tried to do with, with that, with that layout. We have a sidewalk, a five-foot-wide sidewalk that runs across the face of all the structures. What we also, we also designed is a small infiltration trench for stormwater management. Since we're in the coastal zone, we don't need to mitigate for peak rates and peak volumes of runoff, but we do need to provide water quality devices to basically remove the total suspended solids from the from the stormwater. So we have a stone trench that we're, that we're using to have the water sheet flow from the parking lot into that trench. There's a pipe within it that goes to two infiltration chambers that are, that will be located just between these two, these two buildings. Those infiltration chambers will be, will be grassed over, so the turf, there'll be turf on the top of each one of those. We designed them with the low-profile concrete units because of what we think could, could end up going on down there. I think that it's a little better in this situation because it seems to me that there'll be a fair number of people down in this, down on this site as things go on in a nice, smooth, level area that's gonna remain over time is what we were trying to achieve. And we think we did that with concrete as opposed to using the plastic. But in any event, this little shaded line that's shown on sheet six indicates where that infiltration would run and ultimately end up in those, those infiltration basins. So all of our runoff essentially from this driveway will slope down against this curb line. What we've done is we've left openings in the curb so that we let the water just run through the curb into that trench and ultimately into those infiltration basins. We also equip these things with, what they're called as flow emitters. If the volume gets such that those areas fill with water, there's, there's a little pop-up emitter that can help relieve some of the, the pressure that those systems would take, and it would spill out at grade at the highest level. So that's how we would handle any excess rainfall event. Because right now, since it's a redevelopment site, we're required under D E P standards to, to meet the maximum practical degree for stormwater management since it's redevelopment. If it wasn't redevelopment, we would have to meet the letter of the law on all elements of stormwater management. But under the, under the provisions of redevelopment in the riverfront area, we're able to not have to meet the full requirement to stormwater management, meet them to the practical degree. And that's what, that's what we did. I think we really used like the one inch of runoff across the parking lot, tried to elevate the elevate the numbers. The only thing that we didn't do is provide for minimum, we did not mitigate the peak rate and volume, which is not necessary to be done since it's in the coastal flood zone in the A E flood zone. So that's what we have going on stormwater management. Since we have a kitchen in here, we need kitchen waste, so we indicate grease traps for the kitchen waste that are, will be appropriately signed. That'll tie into the sewer line that goes into the, into the sewer main that's in Main Street. And on one of the other sheets, we show a full-width pavement repair. You might recall Dave Menard in Municipal Maintenance says, has asked for that in a number of instances where they went the full-width pavement as opposed to a little narrow patch in the road. So we're showing twenty feet at this end, and we also show the same configuration that we have at the, at the northern end since, you know, it's intended to have an ice cream shop in there. Ice cream shop would require a grease trap for that as well. We, we show the electrical connection, we show the natural gas connection, kitchen waste, sanitary waste. And on this larger building here, we will need to provide fire protection. So we're showing a six-inch, I think we show a six-inch fire protection line going into, into, into that building. You know, all the details as to exactly where it's gonna be located need to be worked out. You know, all the details as to exactly where it's going to be located need to be worked out. We haven't heard back from the fire department in their, their desired location for the fire department connection. But we anticipated wanting to be on the, on the front of the building where typically blonds. We showed two entrances. I, I think we trimmed this one down to, um, twenty feet. Bylaw allows the driveway entrance to be as narrow as eighteen feet. Modified the radiuses a little bit coming in because we feel that most of the traffic will be coming from the north, coming into that site. So we want a little ri- larger turning radius coming from that direction. We don't think we need much of one leaving the site. We don't think there's too much activity going to be headed to the south, but I think that's a thirty-foot radius anyway, so it's, it's still, um, it's still pretty good. And we did the same thing for the, uh, for the front portion. With this building gone right there, that's going to be basically the loading area or the receiving area for the, uh, for the restaurant. So the bylaw requires like three hundred square feet dedic- design- designated area for loading. We have a little better than three hundred square feet of dumpsters will be located in the back in a, in a fenced enclosure as is, as is kind of typical. But we think that, um, by using this as our, essentially our delivery entry, um, we're able to bring our trucks down here, drive into the parking lot, back up into that spot and really access the area fairly well. So that was a little, that was a little tricky at, at one point, but I think we, I think we have it nailed down for the most part. We have a pretty extensive landscaping plan. We had Ed Fuller, he's a landscape architect that we work with a lot. He put all the landscaping in there that's consistent with the, what is it, article, I think eleven of landscaping. So we have shrubs, street trees, things of that nature at the perimeter along the front. Have a, have pretty heavily planted across the frontage. And then on the side here where we abut, um, British Landing, we, we've made, created a little bit of a berm, a couple of foot-high elevated berm. And then we planted that as well. So we're trying to, um, maximize the screening at that particular location. And seeing as that we're in that coastal flood zone, we're really, we really can't put a five-foot berm there. We can put a two-footer in there without too much of a problem, but we're really restricted as far as the size that we can use um, in that coastal flood zone. So that's, that's typically how we've set this, uh, how we've set this job up. Um, we have a segmentation erosion control plan established for the job. We're going to use our entrances as our temporary construction entrances. We show erosion control barrier down at the, uh, pretty much at the water's edge. Um, well, I'm going to say maybe ten feet back from it. We're going to use self fence, combination self fence and hay bale. This will be a crushstone construction entrance. And depending upon the, you know, the amount of concrete that's going to be used on the job, we'll probably have a designated concrete washout pit that these guys can dump. You know, the, the residue out of the mixers into these. You know, what I like using, what we like using is the polyethylene lined hay bales where, or standalone things. You can just dump that waste into that hollow way without it being like dumped in the river or dumped on the site someplace that you might, you might encounter here or there. But that's, um, that's pretty much what the project consists of. This is, I don't think you have the elevations, the newer elevations in your plan set. We shipped them over to planning on Thursday, but I think we've been having a little bit of a problem with some of our, some of our, uh, technical things this week and last week. But this is the, an elevation of the front of the building, the way, the way it's going to look. There's south elevation, north elevation, the rear elevation at the water. And I think that this, I mean, that's just a general, that's just a general sense of how, how that would look. Metal roof, really rustic. It's post and beam type construction, uh, open on the inside. Seems to be pretty, pretty nice. There's those elevations that I showed you that were in the, in the plan set, but with a little more color to them. And you can see that we, we have the height of the building noted on the plan. I calculated the height of the building. We're just going to be shy of forty feet. Um, the building height in the W V one district is forty feet. It's thirty-five pretty much townwide, but we have forty feet here, uh, around, around, we have forty feet in this instance. And those are the stairs that I talked about that would go up to the bar that's in this, this portion of the site. Kitchen over here, the handicap ramp, switchback going back up to a little bit of a canopy and an awning over the, over the front just to protect the patrons before they, you know, if they're walking up the stairs or coming up the ramp, they'll be able to stand outside before they go, before they go inside. That's what the deck would look like on the, uh, on the side of the building. And this is the, the north elevation that shows how that, the stairs go up and the, uh, the canopy is, is there. This is what we envisioned the, that little twelve, fifteen hundred square foot building to look like. That's what they have in mind to build out there. We expect it to be phased construction. I don't think that this, I don't know if this is part, will be part of the first phase, but I think that we would like to seek approval for all phases, but not necessarily, um, build them all at once. I think that the restaurant is first and foremost. I think this falls second and then the pavilion would be, would be third. As far as the pavilion goes, this is what we're talking about for the pavilion. It's just a nice open post and beam, you know, open area gathering area is what, is what it really is. And you know, between the staff, the patrons, the marina, the, the people buying ice cream, just people frequenting down there at Bessie Park. You know, that would be not, not a bad place to maybe hang out for an hour or two. And when we look at it all from above, um, you know, I just tried to get something that showed the, the, the scale of things with respect to the surrounding area, you know, I wasn't able to get as much in there as we, as we wanted, but I think there was some discussion with some people on, on Main Street, trying to make sure they had some viewscapes. And that's how these buildings actually got located is because they didn't want to obstruct the view from the people directly across the street. And as you know, that grade at, at Main Street goes, it goes up like this. It's pretty steep, particularly on Cedar Street. But that's the, you know, that's the, the nickel tour of what we're, what we're trying to do and, you know. Um, if you have some questions, we're happy to, we're happy to answer them. We know there are some, a few things that need to be, need to be done. I know that we need to do a little more coordination, but don't expect anything really to change with parking, with the layout, with stormwater management. It's just fine tuning the buildings. Really need to get the foundation plan together and figure out, um, you know, truly where everything's going to be. But this is, uh, this is what we're, this is what we're hoping for.
Wow, how much time we got? Uh, Mr. Riley, your timeline on this?
Since I guess the authorization.
So, uh, is the cost estimate submitted? Is there anyone from the public here to talk tonight? Um, I, if the board, uh, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to skip right to public to get him on, on the recording. Is that, is that okay? Welcome.
Afternoon. My voice is a little off since I come down with, uh, with the call bells policy, so I'll do the best I can. This is a long-term project that goes way back to Korea Lover, who basically was there forever. We all know that we had the vacant property with the block and all the stuff and all the mess there and the growth and the mess for a long time. I was able to work with Mr. Bacon, get the property cleaned up some years ago. Uh, there were different things we tried, there nothing happened. Mr. Warren has stepped up to actually develop the property. And this is a really, uh, Mr. Swenson will understand, this is a piece of the overall development of downtown Wareham, Main Street, the harbor. This is one end of, and the other end, of course, is Tremont Nail. And this is an important piece to get started in order to get that development done all the way down. We're looking at, you know, trying to do a boardwalk along Merced's Way, bring it around in that, where the narrowest restaurant is on the other side. Have a boardwalk there as well. This is a long-term overall project. Uh, we have infrastructure money coming shortly from the federal government. We have an opportunity, what I will call a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for most of us to actually get this done and take a half the area in Wareham, which is zero. If there's, you know, financial impact or anything and develop something that really works well. If you go up to any little small towns in Maine, every town up there has taken their waterfront and converted it to destination areas. People come now. This gives us an opportunity to basically, uh, make our financial situation much more sustainable. There'll be more income coming, et cetera. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, this is a really extremely important project to get done. Uh, Conservation Commission has been looking at it because there's issues there. They've been working around it as well. Because right now, from the town side, as far as the administration goes, we're very much in favor of this project. Anything you can do to help, we appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Um, anyone else in the public? Please. Yeah.
My name is Claude and Pointe, my wife. Uh, we're both here. We live at fifty-eight Main Street, which is across the street from this project. And, um, I was, I was talking to Mr. Warren today about elevations of those buildings. So I could take a, take a look at them on the, on the plan.
Please speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get the elevations of the building, how it's going to affect that here. I mean, on the, um, on the, on the whole site plan.
The, I want to-
You mean the grates as opposed to the building?
Yeah.
Did you want to see the colored, uh, board? Did he show it at the very end?
I do, yeah.
You know, the very last one you showed, Bill?
Yeah, that would help out.
Where you were able to point out the sightlines from the buildings across the street? No?
One of the front there.
You saw it here?
Yes.
There's Cedar Street here. There's fifty-eight, this is yours.
That's right. Did he mention the height of that building?
The gazebo, um, I don't think I have the height on the gazebo. Um, I don't have the height with me on the gazebo. But I mean, uh, yeah, so I, I don't happen to have that.
Okay.
I don't have it at all. But that's one of the things that we're work, working with. I think it's going to be around twenty-five feet up to the ridge.
Yeah.
On the building.
And how is that ridge going to look? What is, what's the configuration of the?
I need you to, I need you to address the board with your questions. Sir? Talk to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just wondering what that building was going to look like.
It's going to look like this.
Oh, okay, so it's all going to-
So that's, it's going to be a gable, a gable end on these ends. You're going to have a sloped roof looking toward Main Street?
The sloped roof looking towards, to the main street.
This would be facing Main Street.
Right, okay. And, and the height from there to the-
Like I said, I think it's roughly twenty-five feet.
On the ends or in the middle?
It'll be the same.
I'm seeing.
No, that's what I'm saying. It would be exactly the same.
Okay.
Twenty-five feet, I think.
Oh, twenty-five feet.
This plane right there to that corner.
That's right.
Be roughly twenty-five feet.
But on the ends, it's going to be lower.
No.
Anything else, sir? Nope, that's it. Thank you. We have a, we have a, a Zoom person who'd like to ask, uh, make a comment. Must, uh, speak up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, perfect. I wasn't sure. So I just wanted to know, I-
Who is this?
Oh, Sherry Patera, and I live at British Landing. And I just want to know, will this be a restaurant only or a restaurant and a function hall? Because I've heard different stories.
I, I didn't catch that.
Restaurant or restaurant or function hall?
We have filed it as, as a restaurant.
Okay, okay. So I just want to know, I, I understand where the kitchen side will be and, and the kitchen entrance and all that. You mentioned a two-foot berm and will that shade or obscure the restaurant from British Landing or the dumpsters, the trucks pulling in and out and things like that?
It will, yeah, yes, it will.
Okay.
It's a combination of, of, of shade trees and shrubs and, um, I don't know, what would you call it? Herbaceous or annuals or things like that at grade. So there's a variety of plantings on that, uh, on that berm at that location.
Okay, um, and so will this be a chain restaurant or is there a, you know, uh, it, do you have a tenant in mind? Is there a tenant in mind?
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that. I don't know.
Okay. Um, I, I was asking because I don't know, sometimes these things are built sort of to a certain restaurant's style or design or, or something like that. But, and then the parking, will that be limited to this property or will the parking be a shared thing on all of Main Street or um, is there a thought on that?
It's intended to be a private, um, private parking lot for the, the occupants and patrons of the facility that's proposed.
Perfect, perfect. All right. Well, thank you. That's, those are my questions and I can't wait.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Um, I'll go to the board. Um, but before I do that, Charlie, assuming, um, assuming that the authorization comes through, um, you have a lot on your plate right now. Is this something that can be done by the tenth?
I believe so.
Uh, do you have what you need to do that work?
Couple of questions for Bill while he's here would help me out.
All right.
Is there any, uh, chance or plan for an elevator in the building or are you just going to use the handicap ramp?
Um, right now it's the handicap ramp. We have discussed the possibility of using an elevator as well.
Um, just for handicap people, a long ramp would be difficult perhaps. Um, any possibility of using porous pavement to reduce the impact on that trench you're talking about?
Um, I think that we could use a, we could use porous pavement for, at least for a portion of the site. I think perhaps if we were to evaluate that, we might look at using porous pavement for the parking stalls themselves. But the drive-through aisle probably would be, I would, I would always want to use just standard practice for that drive-through and maybe use the, uh, stalls for porous paving.
Any reason why you wouldn't want to use it for pour, for the driveway?
Um, that's what I've always done in the past. And I think that, you know, when, when you continuously drive over asphalt, I think that you continuously need it all together. It's a different mix. And, um, you know, I would, I just think that it would hold up better and function better as a, as a, as, as standard pavement.
All right. And one last question. You didn't mention anything about a lighting plan.
But there's light shown on the plate. I need to get my photometrics plan together as well.
I was just thinking if, if it was the type of lighting that was, you know, the, either the, um, period lighting or something that was low so that it, it kept the, the lighting intensity subdued would be a beautiful thing. Um, in the rest of it, I'll take a look at the plan when I get the authorization.
All right, we've got about five minutes left on, on, um, W C T V. Anybody have any critical questions they want tonight?
I had just one quick one. Um, when you described the parking, it sounds like you're right on the ragged edge of making all the parking that you need happen. What about employees?
That's part of the parking calculation, the way the bylaw is written.
Yeah, it just seems to me it's a good size. Yeah, it just seems to me it's a good sized restaurant, 150 seats. I, I gotta believe there's 20 plus employees. Most people that work in the restaurant industry are, are single owner type people. So you're looking at 20 plus cars.
Yeah. And, you know, sometimes, um, where you have, you know, I'm not suggesting this to be the case, but I've seen in some restaurants where, where your loading area is, if they can use it, um, during like the evening dinner time. They sometimes queue up everybody right behind each other and not really work toward dedicated space. But, you know, the way the regulation is written and we just applied it, I, I understand exactly your point.
Let's dive, let's dive into that, uh, next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
That was just the first thing that popped up. Overall, I love the idea. Hey, it's great.
Michael? Jane?
I have a quick question. Uh, I hate to be the jerk here, but did you consider putting parking under the building? You've got the grade working.
We talked, we talked about it and I think that, uh, there was just some discussions with the fire ratings that need to take place between the parking garage and the use upstairs. It becomes a pretty expensive undertaking. But it was, it was thought about. I don't know if it's really ruled out yet, but.
The grade is supporting it and, and the idea of, somebody asked about the elevator. Did you, Charlie asked about the elevator? And, and that would, you know, if, if an elevator were going in, that would, you know, make some sense.
In the portion of the site that you can just see those contour lines between the elevated piece and this, you know, really about, you know, half of it would be, might be usable. I mean, you know, we have the structure that has to hold the deck up and I don't know what the structure is going to consist of, but it might be, you know, might be some, we'll look into it and report back. Mr. Corbett?
Great job, Bill. Look forward to it.
Mr. Shoals, thanks.
Um, I, I know we're going to continue to talk about parking, but just to plant the thought. Uh, I know you talked about the restaurant parking and, and Mr. King raised that you're going to have a bar, bar park, parking one to five, that doesn't seem like a good density for a very active bar. Something to think about. We'll talk more.
Sure.
You don't have to answer right now. Um, I also want to comment that on-street parking, um, is really not practical and that's section of Main Street. It's just really horrible parking down there.
Please, please, please.
So I'm just, I'm commenting, so parking, I think we need to continue to think through and talk about parking. Uh, the last thing is, um, traffic flow. Uh, I don't know if you, you have done or plan to do a traffic study, but have you thought about, I mean, there's like, and this is great. I'm really in favor of this, but Friday night, Saturday night, you had a couple of hundred people down there trying to get out onto Main Street at that intersection. Um, I imagine that that's going to be a problem.
I don't know. That intersection was redesigned a number of years ago to a 90 degree type of thing. And I think that it's really improved the traffic flow at that, at that location. So.
Okay, we could disagree on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, but I think traffic, we need to think about traffic impact on that intersection.
Okay. I think if we continue, if we close this now, or not, if we continue this now to the 10th, we can help Bob out. All right, we're good? I'll take a motion to continue the hearing, uh, 3921 at 59 Main Street until January 10th, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. King and a second by Mr. Shoals. Mr. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Shoals?
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste?
Mr. King?
I.
Mr. Swenson votes aye. 500 will continue to the 10th of January. Um, I have one comment I want to make. Um, we're gonna, I'm going to go by, uh, liaison updates, master plan updates, uh, right now. Um, I want people to understand, we've got a bunch of subdivision plans coming that are zoning freeze efforts. And, um, I've talked to town council and Mr. Buckland about some ideas on how we can expedite that process, considering that these are not subdivision plans, these are freeze plans. And there's some good ideas out there that we could, we could condition these approvals. So if they ever do want to do something other than freeze the zoning, they have to come back as to what Charlie calls taking a, we get another bite at the apple if you will. So be prepared, that's coming. Hopefully it's coming. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. King votes?
I said.
Miss Leeson, you get to vote on this one.
Aye.
Mr. Shoals?
Yes.
And Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson votes aye. Thank you, Wareham.